...a lot of money and it's like, well, that's for the man who manages that.
I went for a pirate's hand. And I'm like, Santa New York. My home, so you need to come in, and I had to go into New York the next day, so I didn't want to play. I didn't see the snow, so I got a hotel room in Manhattan. And everything was being... The snow again. I called, obviously. So I had actually been to a... I had a... I was in, uh, I was thinking about here. But I was going out with dinner, but I didn't think of something else. We need to call me, but I didn't really want to. It was really bad. It was really bad.
You can't find it, um... I would love that. Wouldn't make the... Check it out.
It's about the technical process and all the...
Three, uh...
Call them if they're order, but try to split the flag. I pledge allegiance. Please lower your voices. Alec, could you please be in the certification of compliance?
The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Crash Post on the Golden Ford in the offices attached to Lakewood at least forty hours ago. The public has the right to attend this meeting and reasonable comprehensive minutes of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meeting Act.
Any role, please?
Mr. Grunberger, Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Welcome back.
Yeah. Welcome back, Sagar.
Mr. Crankford.
Here.
Mr. Stable.
Here.
Mr. Plankton.
Be serious. When are the elections?
Mr. Hertzler.
Here.
Mr. Renner.
Here.
Mr. Eisen.
Here.
Mr. Grappel.
Here.
Mr. Hyde.
Here.
Okay. Confirmation recording status, it's on.
Yeah, it's on, and just a reminder, we do not, not refer anymore, so please be sure to see clearly all public comment, there's a little question, they, um, something.
Identify yourself and install it. Swearing in our professionals?
Uh, please, it's work, that one, I give you for the form, you should come over to the number. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, mobilization resolutions.
Yes, you have two.
We have two, and just say you can vote.
Okay.
Please.
On all of them, we have two unable to vote are Mr. Grunberger, Mr. Garfield, Mr. Plankton, Mr. Renner, and Mrs. Grappel. So we do not view danger, Alec, to vote. The first is SP twenty-two seventy-three for confirmation on yours.
You have a motion, move. Thank you, please. Second, all in favor, aye.
And the second is SP twenty-two seventy-four for Yeshiva or Yisophor Academy.
Move.
Second.
Second, motion second, all in favor, aye. Thank you. Go onto public hearing, number one.
Under public hearing, an application, SP twenty-one eighty-six, made by Baysworth and Cominets in Lakewood, the major site plan for a school located on Cedar Bridge Avenue.
I just want to say that this application is not for the hearing on the application, it's just to decide on jurisdiction of which board is allowed to...
And Mr. Jackson had a conflict on with one of the objectors, I believe, so Mr. Dasty is...
I'm going to just put on the record. Recently, I learned that one of the objectors was Mr. Baffey. He's an attorney that I deal with frequently. I thought it would be best if I recuse myself in this matter. I've provided everything to Mr. Dasty. Mr. Dasty is here. I'm going to step out of the dais, from the dais and out of the room while it's not confusing. Just give me a ring when you're ready. Thank you.
Let the record be recorded, Mr. Grappel.
Okay. Terry, do you have any comments on?
I don't know how much you want me to go over each other, but I do think this is...
Strictly jurisdiction. Right, so you have no, no comments?
I don't know, we go through what you're preparing.
Okay, no. It's premature. Okay, thank you. Mr. Doyle. Who's who over there?
Hello, sir.
Who's the objector, who's?
Uh... He thinks if I give him the book, then I will know it. Mr. Chairman members, John Paul Doyle. Privilege to represent the applicant. In representing the applicant, I don't represent merely Baysworth and Cominets. I represent the children who go to school there, the parents who send them there, the people who are proud enough to support and volunteer for the school that they go to, the rabbis that teach. So, what that said, we appreciate that we are an applicant. An applicant, he said he seemed to draw up an objective, maybe a lot of objectives. We have one objective, a neighbor who doesn't want to rule this, so be... Now, there's been opinions, Mr. Dasty, who also provided you with an opinion, Mr. Jackson did. Now I can go back to Mr. Jackson's opinion, frankly, because I don't think the board should hear it. He's decided that we have a conflict, accept it, but that rules out that. But I will say this. The arguments that have been made in the documents you would have seen filed with the board by Ron, Mr. Gazowski, talk to lot two sixty-one in terms of the two thousand eight application. There's facts, there's law, and there's red herrings.
Do you have any map to put up now?
I don't have, I can put up a map. Two sixty-one is the corner property. Three eighty-six and three eighty-seven are the other two lots. That's a red herring because all that the board has that's in front of it at this point, in fact and in law, is an application that was revised, and the plans are entitled to originally the final major site plan proposed school, Airport Road, Cedar Bridge A F E, lots three eighty-six and three eighty-seven, and lot two sixty-one. That's what was before this board as a revised application in September twenty-ninth on Edward State, submitted on October second. As its, as a result of this submission, your engineer, and so I won't argue, I'll just read because it's clear. The application is reviewed by your engineer, and remember, the ordinance did not become effective until December the twelfth. The question was, did we have, did we submit an application before that date? On October nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, a month and a half before the ordinance becomes effective, before it was even introduced, the engineer's report says revised admission, and he mentions all three lots. He refers to the map entitled Site Plan Proposed School. In the fulness of his report, not once does he suggest that the application is incomplete or can't be considered. In fact, at least a half a dozen times, Terry says testimony should be given on this point. Now, you don't get the testimony if you don't have yet a complete report. So, we have a map submitted, I shouldn't say a map, we have a fourteen-page map as one of seven items that are submitted, stormwater, environmental impact. So we have an application revised, we have an engineer's report on it, and then the process of this board is to submit it to a plan review meeting. The plan review meeting, the applicant, the applicant's engineer, the applicant's contractor, Mr. Arby, and for the board, board secretary, board engineer, and the board attorney. Those notes at that meeting, and I would think that we should acknowledge as evidence for this hearing and whatever it might turn to, is the application which I spoke, the submission that was made dated September twenty-ninth, the engineer's report by October nineteenth, and the plan review meeting. Again, not to read between the lines, just read what it says. Lot two sixty-one to be included as part of application. And it has in the pre-printed form, it would look like public hearing date, and it's filled in, December fifth, two thousand seventeen. So you have a revised application, fully reviewed by your engineer, suggesting the next step is the testimonial step, that is a hearing, and your plan review, uh, procedure wherein it's a public hearing date, December fifth. Now, those are the facts. Now, what's the law? Very simple. The law was used to be, Hatchett could turn on a dime and say, no matter what you did, it isn't enough. We're going to change the ordinance to make it for you, and do it. And you rattled off. That was inequitable. The law was changed. The law said, if an application is submitted, submitted, the case of Dunbar, which I hope Mr. Dasty has cited for you, because I think it's all that you need to read to know that this application should be heard by this board. In that case, they said, it is begin, it is beyond argument that a submission need not be a complete application. They noted that the earlier form of the law, before it became law, when it was submitted as a bill, said you needn't get to benefit of the privilege unless your application was deemed complete. In the Dunbar case, they said, you don't have to be deemed complete. So, what more do we need to do to have this application have the equitable relief, the fairness relief, than to have done what we did? Buys an application, show the whole site, show the purpose of what it is, a school, have your engineer review it, have it ready for a hearing, at your plan review meeting, set a date. Circumstances got away, we weren't, couldn't meet that date, so... But we were in a position that the law says we could be and have the privilege and protection of the law. They made it clear in that case that what the legislature did in saying deemed complete was too tight, submitting an application is enough, is that the burden was less. We not only met submitting an application, we had an application ready to be heard under the law. That law was meant for entities and applicants, and in this case, a school. So I hope that when you take the fulness of the law and the facts, that you would allow us the opportunity to come before this board most knowledgeable on site plan application to deem its engineering, traffic, changes, all those other aspects. All we're asking you to is the fairness to the curfew.
Mr. Doyle, currently, if you would apply for this application, would this board be the right board or not? Explain what happened before the new master plan?
Okay.
Was it legal then, it's not legal now, let's see, what's the difference?
The difference is that this board hears applications for permitted uses. The zoning board hears applications for non-permitted use. So then the question becomes, as of what time to be heard by this board, if you are a permitted user, do you have to be complete or submit, rather? On October second, when the plans dated September twenty-ninth were delivered, schools were permitted use on those three lots. On October the nineteenth, when Terry reviewed, schools were permitted use on these three lots. On October thirty-first, when the plan review meeting was held, schools were permitted use on these three lots. That, the law says, at that point, the town wants to change the ordinance, they can change the ordinance, but you want to hear it.
And what's currently?
Make the time chart.
Right. Currently, which ones are permitted, which lots are heard and which are not permitted?
Schools would not be permitted based upon the ordinance that became effective on December twelfth after our application was submitted and was deemed sufficient for a public hearing.
On all three lots?
On all three lots. As I, as I understand it, I certainly can be corrected, as of December twelfth, schools were no longer permitted on any of the three lots. Before that, they, they were permitted on all three of the lots.
So basically, the whole difference is that we voted on new master plan, you feel that you were in before?
No, no, it's, I appreciate that the master, that you don't, zoning ordinance doesn't drop down from the sky. It has a whole process, it has, uh, it has to be examined every once in a while. You get to a point where you say, boy, we need to do something larger. So the town has a master plan committee. The planning board submits it to the committee. They report, they have public hearings. In this process, in Lakewood, it was a well-thought-out, lengthy, maybe two-year process. But the bell rings at a particular time. It doesn't ring when you start the process. It doesn't ring when the master plan is approved. It doesn't ring when the master plan is taken up by the township committee. Doesn't ring when the township committee says, we're going to adopt that ordinance on first reading. It doesn't ring until second reading is published in the newspaper. That date, in this case, is December twelfth. Up until December twelfth, the zoning on this property permitted schools. Under the law, if we had submitted an application prior to that date, we were entitled the benefit of having that application heard before this board as a permitted use. Because on October second, it was permitted use. On October thirty-first, when we were given a hearing date of December fifth, before the ordinance became effect, the application was sufficient. That's not a matter of fact or weighing the master plan, or it's a matter of...
Thank you. Nazraski, you can make it as fast as Mr. Doyle made it?
I'm sorry.
Could you make it as fast as Mr. Doyle?
I'm going to just, uh, Mr. Doyle, I discussed how short we would be, and I will tell it to you.
And how do you reckon, is speaking for mine, there's no system on it?
I, I will be short. The fact of the matter is, is that...
Just identify yourself for the record.
Talking about whether or not there'd never be a school constructed on this site.
Identify yourself for the record. Please.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. There's no system on it, we needed everything for the record.
Okay. Uh, the issue here is really what board has the jurisdiction to hear this application? And my position is, is that it is the zoning board of adjustment that has this jurisdiction, not the planning board. Now, I think the one thing which my colleague has avoided saying is that there was never an application filed for this matter that included both of the lots in question. Uh, I think then Mr. Jackson earlier had requested from Ms. Morris a review of the file and asked specifically whether or not an application for a school on lot six, two sixty-one had ever been filed, and the answer was no, that one had not. So, uh, the issue here again is what board has jurisdiction to hear this case? And my position further is, is that with regard to this issue of jurisdiction, it's really a matter for the zoning board of adjustment to hear. Now, years ago, when there was a question concerning use, uh, you would proceed first to the zoning board of adjustment for a use variance, and if that were granted, you would then leave the zoning board of adjustment, and you would go to the planning board, for the planning board to get site plan. Uh, that was changed perhaps over twenty years ago, where the legislature said, if in fact you have a use variance, then you go before the zoning board, both for the variance as well as for the site plan. So the argument that in some way zoning boards of adjustment are not qualified to your site plan applications, there's simply no merit to that. Now, we appeared once before, we had written submissions to Mr. Jackson, I think Mr. Jackson opined as to what his opinion was, and advised you accordingly, acknowledging the fact that that was simply his legal opinion, you would still have to rule on this. Mr. Jackson then had a potential conflict of interest. Uh, Mr. Dasty, uh, was brought in as the conflict attorney. My understanding is, is that, uh, he's listened to the transcripts of our earlier presentations, he's read the letter of Greece which we have both submitted, and he's prepared to opine to this board what his legal opinion is. Uh, you will take that into consideration and vote accordingly.
Mr. Nazraski, if you're, the only lot that's questionable is lot two sixty-one? All the two lots, you would agree they have a right to...
The plan, as I understand, well, I know that I do understand, the plan presently, uh, when it was first submitted, there was an approval for an office building going perhaps back ten years. That provided for...
Which lot?
Building with an ingress and egress.
That was two sixty-one, Chairman. Now, the office building approval was two sixty-one. The corner lot, for lack of better characterization.
That, when that was approved, the adjacent lot where there's a proposed school to be constructed was in no way involved. Was there ingress and egress into the adjacent lot? And there was in fact an egress and ingress, uh, onto the office building off of that main road going past it. Now, when we're coming back, what you're proposing to do is to have the buses ingress off of the main road, but egress onto the adjacent side road, uh, having to traverse through... off of the main road, but egress onto the adjacent side road, having to traverse through the office building parking lot in a roadway in order to do. I don't think there's any question, but that makes the office building a school use because of that under case law. The question is, when this application was filed, and the fact of the matter simply is, it was filed after the zone change, therefore, they've got to be before the zoning board of adjustment.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gazarovski, and I love Mr. Doyle's answer as well. It seems, it's either black or white. It was either filed before the date or it was filed after the date. How can it be ambiguous?
Why me?
How can it be an add-to-use when it was filed?
There's no add-to-use, it was filed after the zone change.
Yet Mr. Doyle stipulated that it was filed before.
He didn't say, he didn't say the application was filed. Your, Ms. Morris said the application was not filed, so it wasn't ambiguous in her mind. Now, Mr. Doyle's position is that because of submissions, because of backs, but the application for lot 261 was never filed showing a school use on that property.
Mr. Doyle, do you agree with that?
Absolutely not. I have, he has words. I have a map. There's a map that was submitted on October 2nd, proposed school, preliminary and final, major site plan, airport, Rose, Cedar Bridge, lot 386, 387, lot 261, with all of these documents. Not only was it submitted, but the board engineer looked at it and said it was a submission. The plan review committee looked at it, lot 261 being included as part of application, public hearing date the second day. All those things happened. Those are facts. That is a complete application ready to be heard.
So what was not submitted? What was missing?
I wasn't going to get anything was missing.
Okay, because we're asking, what was missing? In two words.
Well, they never filed, when they filed the application, they only filed an application for the school building on those adjacent two lots being lots 386 and 387.
So can I ask you a question, a yes or no? Is, are you saying that because the application itself didn't list third lot, that's the problem?
Yes, that's what he said.
That's the whole problem?
That's what he said.
The application when it was submitted showed to include 261. And was it your understanding when you saw it, that 261 wasn't included?
Our understanding, not getting into legalities, but on first impression of the application, we review plans and reports of engineering. The plans and reports refer to the lot. Ally is going to get some of the paperwork upstairs, she's going to break down the patch and look at it, and you can add all the work for us.
May I?
Yes, sir.
Okay. A couple of things which are not in question. Couple of things that are, I think, both attorneys would agree with. The school application was amended to provide the driveway through the corner lot, lot 261.
It was not on the original?
It was on the original application, which was filed back in 2016. There's no question that as a result of the driveway, the, there's a non-conformity with regard to the driveway going through the office lot, lot 261. The issue is, when was the application complete? And was it before the ordinance that was adopted on final reading in early December of 17, which made these lots non-conforming in terms of a school use? Mr., and I can assure Mr. Doyle and Mr. Gazarovski, I read everything, including a lot of the cases. And let me just quote a little bit, the same case that Mr. Doyle just quoted. It's really the most recent case which interprets the new law. The case is called Dunbar Homes versus Franklin Chapter. It's at 448 NJ Super 583. Now, Dunbar's an appellate division case, which means it's binding on everybody in New Jersey, except for the Supreme Court. We've got to follow the Dunbar case. That's the law. And that's how it interprets this, what we call the time of decision statute. It quotes section NJSA, New Jersey Municipal Law and Order 55D-10.5, which says development regulations, and then this is the new statute, here's what it says. "Notwithstanding any provision of law to the contrary, those development regulations which are in effect on the date of submission of an application, the ordinance which is in effect on the date of the submission of the application shall govern the review of that application for development and any decision made with regard to that application for development. Any provisions of an ordinance, except those relating to health and public safety, which is not the situation, that are adopted subsequent to the date of the application for development shall not be applicable." We're not talking about health and safety. Dunbar goes through what it means to be a complete application as of the date that the ordinance is in effect. Judge Espinosa, for the appellate court, went through different definitions in the Laney's law to try to determine what completeness really meant. The first thing that she quoted after the statute I just quoted to you was a definition of application for development. And an application for development means an application form, an application form completed as specified by this chapter and the rules and regulations of the border agency, before which the application is being presented, and all accompanying documents, information, fees, et cetera. And then, she quotes section, a two, a section earlier, 10.3, to define when an application is deemed complete. When's an application, we're talking about the application. When is it deemed to be complete? It is complete when the time period for action by a municipal agency commences. The application, in my opinion, was not complete until it physically included lot 261. How would the public know that lot, never mind, Mr., never mind your engineer, the reason for make these applications filed complete is that the public knows what's going on. The public didn't know about lot 261, the vacant lot, until after the new ordinance became effective. There's no question that it was the ordinance first, and then lot 261 was put on the amended application. Not until the application was amended was it complete. The notice, as I understand it from Ally, the notice that went out to the property owners did include lots 261. Why? Because you wanted to alert the public that lot 261 was part of the complete application. I'm advising you that based on the Dunbar case and my reading of the statute, this application was not complete until after the new ordinance went into effect. And therefore, schools were not permitted for this application. Now, when I, when I reviewed the file, I wondered why no one went to the zoning officer or the zoning board for an interpretation of the ordinance. Under section, subsection B of NJSA 40,55 capital D dash 70, under subsection B, the zoning board is the one that interprets zoning ordinances. I think that's where this should have been to begin with. Coincidentally, I'm the attorney for the zoning board, so you've got two for one. But it's my opinion that if they wish, they could still go to the zoning board for an interpretation of the ordinance. But to answer the direct question tonight in terms of jurisdiction, I don't think you have jurisdiction of this hearing, because I think that the application was not complete until it physically penned on, penned in it, 261, which was after the ordinance was adopted.
Even though, even though you said that notice was given before 261, who makes the difference?
Notice to the public was given, but that was given within 10 days of the meeting, you know.
And then notice was given prior?
Oh, I don't know the date of, what was the date of the notice?
The notice, the January...
So 261 was not noticed until after the new master plan was adopted?
And 261 is actually added to the two-day that state that I have to file, and you don't really have to ask me the ownership of the lot. They added it to their plan, because they have a duty to ask me.
Well, the notice that went to the property owner, which included lot 261 as part of the application, that talked about a meeting which would have been held by the planning board in January 23rd, which is six weeks after the ordinance went into effect. And it was mailed to the property owners on January 11th, a month after the ordinance was adopted.
So there was no notice on lot 261 prior to December 12th?
There was no notice either on file here or to the public, before the ordinance became in effect.
Okay, thank you.
If I might, and I realize you now have listened to me, and you've already heard from your attorney telling you how to vote.
No, don't be insulting, John. I'm giving them my legal opinion.
Insult you. No one's got it 40 years.
I don't think I can tell these people how to vote.
Let me, no, no, and I understand your opinion.
Mr. Doyle, what's your position on the record already?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gazarovski, and we heard from our attorney. I'm ready to ask a motion from the board.
Mr. Isaacson asked a question about, what did the public know? Mr. Dasty correctly said, the application didn't have the number 261 on it, and I can't argue that it did. The question is, what the law says is the application has to be submitted. Mr. Dasty said, the public had no notice. Typically, a public, a member of the public doesn't know until they get a notice of the hearing. The statute doesn't speak to when the hearing is being held, it speaks to when the application was submitted. Now, what did the public know? I, I don't know what the answer is going to be to this question, Mr. Chairman, but if somebody went to the planning board's office in November of 2017, before the ordinance was adopted, and said, I'd like to see the file on Bayous Ruben Pavilns, what would they see? I'm guessing if Ally would believe this, you want to see the whole file? You'd truck it out. And what would they see? They would see an application, 20 pages of maps that say 261. They'd see an engineers report that says 261. Now, the application form is basically a two-page document. And what the opinion you have to guide you, and cover whatever decision you want to, is that two-page application, missing three numbers, 261, matters more than application, 20 pages, the eight documents, environmental impact, the stormwater, the whole thing that was in the file, the engineers report, and you report, no, lot 261 included as part of the application, we schedule it for a hearing. If it was complete enough to be scheduled for a hearing, then it meets Dunbar. And I think that's what Dunbar said.
Thank you. I would ask a motion from the board members. Would you like to make a motion?
I'm sorry, members of public, please keep it down in the back, we're taking a motion.
We heard what Mr. Doyle said, Mr. Gazarovski, we heard what our attorney has recommended.
Yeah, I, I would move a motion to, based on everything that we heard and based on the opinion of our board attorney, I mean, I see, I see two, I see two issues. Firstly, I heard the opinion of our attorney, and also that really jurisdiction of zoning, it really belongs to the zoning board anyway. But I would move a motion that we do not have jurisdiction over, over this application.
They should go to the zoning board to see who has jurisdiction. I took it along. Who has a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Isaacson seconds. So Mr. Flansmore made a motion, and Mr. Isaacson seconds.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Brenner?
Yes.
Mr. Stables?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzler?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Klein, would you let Mr. Jackson know we're ready for him to come out? Thank you. It's a minor subdivision for Mayor Wayne Brennan to create two lots for one at 344.
Angela's back.
Let the record reflect it. Mr. Grappel's back, and Mr. Brenner has arrived.
And Mr. Jackson's back too.
And Mr. Jackson's back.
Okay. Onto Terry first. Everybody, please be quiet.
Gary?
Ah, my word.
Yes.
Various that are requesting, including...
That's it? Okay, thank you. Do you still make a second meeting?
What's that?
Do you still make a second?
I think I got that.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate towards the...
This is a case, right?
Yes.
Number two.
If you prefer our testimony, give your report before the first officer. Are you, Russell, if you're okay with engineering services, Manasqua, New Jersey? We have before you, actually, we've been to, through several meetings, is a minor subdivision of the existing lot of Corey Court. It's a 35,741 square foot lot. It's currently in your 40 zone, designated under the master plan ordinance, in our 12 zone, has access to Whitesville Road, which is not one of the roads noted in the, in the master plan, in its improvement. We're proposing to subdivide the lot into a, two lots, the one lot being 90 by 160, 14,000, 280 square feet. And then the second lot will be the remainder, which contains existing home on property, 21,257 square feet. Not familiar with yourself, Corey Court is a small cul-de-sac at the end of the entrance to West E.
We recommend that that should be in our 12?
Yes.
And, and they never passed an ordinance on it?
Well, the ordinance was passed, the ordinance, as you recall, had commented about the expansion of certain roads, specifically county roads. So we're proposing to subdivide the lots, there are variances required, it's in, currently in our 40, so there are a lot area variances for the two lots, as well as a lot width variance, 90 feet on lot 1.32, where 150 feet is required in the R 12. Again, both lots will be fully conforming and actually oversized for the R 12 zone.
Joe, how many houses on Corey Court?
In total, I believe there are one, two, three, four, five.
How big are those properties?
Those properties range in size, but they raise probably from around 40,000 down to 30, 32,000, somewhere around.
How many, how many are below 40,000?
I don't know that for a fact. I know all of them.
And it's a new subdivision, it's a fairly new subdivision, like six, seven years old?
I think it's a little older than that, but fairly.
And you're saying that the smallest lot was 35,000?
About 32,000.
32,000. And you want to take a 35 and make it a different one?
Into 12, yeah, 14,000, which is what the master plan called for in itself.
Right, yeah, but the master plan, the R 12 has been enacted?
Correct.
For all intents and purposes.
Well, there's an acting ordinance, but obviously there's caveats in it.
Right. What was the caveat? That we fix which roads?
If I can go through my planning testimony, I believe the variances can be granted under the C2 criteria, a better planning, for the purposes of the act of promoted by deviation from the standard. Purpose A, a motion to general welfare. Purpose E, to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions. Opposed site promotes the general welfare by developing in accordance with the master plan objectives, which spent a significant amount of time determining which areas were appropriate for higher density. Opposed subdivision promotes appropriate population density, as the master plan does identify this, and there's an acting ordinance identifying this area as the R 12 zone. The master plan identifies that some rezoning should not proceed subject to improvement of certain roads, because Whitesville Road is not one of the roads identified. Specifically, the roads noted in the master plan in acting ordinance were Cross Street, Route 9, Pine Street.
Joe, I have a question.
Yeah.
I think we said that the R 12 doesn't go into effect until Cross Street gets developed. I don't care about Whitesville. But we defeated the whole purpose of the, of the... I think we said that the R12 doesn't go into effect until Cross Street gets developed. I don't care about Whitesville. But we defeated the whole purpose of the new master. We said R12, and we said that we need wider roads.
Well, we're not...
It's not giving variances.
We're not of the opinion that we are permitting subdivision. We understand we need the variance. So in order to justify the variance, is one of the reasons to promote it.
It's just the variance. From our 40 down to 40,000 square feet.
Correct.
And there's nobody in the area who has 40,000 square feet.
Well, if I may, I do have a map showing several subdivisions approved by this board.
Can I interrupt for one moment? The standard, Mr. Kozlowski is stating that he is seeking a variance under C2. That's the statute, and C2 is where you basically promote the purposes of zoning. And the question is whether the benefits, in other words, the way that you promote the purposes of the MUL, do they substantially outweigh any detriment? So the burden is a little different than we're used to under a C1, or on the negative criteria. In the negative criteria, the question, when you look at the detriments, whether the detriments substantially outweigh the positives. But on a C2, you have to say, well, these are the reasons of the land use law that we say we're advancing, and they substantially outweigh any drawbacks. That's the first threshold of the test.
Yeah, Mr. Jackson, by the master plan, we said very clearly that any new construction should be... We have to fix the roads first. Are we going to give variances when we defeat the whole purpose?
Well, that gets to the negative criteria, where the question is whether the... And I'll have it memorized. I'll look it up in a minute. It's something to the effect of you have to show that the detriments don't contravene the master plan, the zone plan, the zoning ordinances, or the well-being of the neighborhood. So that goes to the negative side. So if you answer that question, then there is a negative impact. Then you have to weigh the negatives against the positives.
Which I haven't gotten to that portion of my testimony.
In the immediate area, you have any more 14,000 square feet?
There were, in our block, lot 251, this board had approved several subdivisions. I have a copy of the tax plan highlighted in our engine, the subdivision, creating lots that are undersized for the zone. Specifically, along the trade roads and the corner of Old Whitesville. There are four lots that were approved.
Is that before the master plan?
This was before the master plan, yes. So the planning board has seen that it's reasonable to promote higher density in this area prior to the master.
Joe, I get the feeling from the board that... And you might want to look it over.
In fact, well...
I can ask for a motion. I'm being very honest with you. The master plans were very specific that we have to have the roads bulletin. Here, we're going to stop giving variances, and the whole master plan goes out of the window.
Understood.
We're very strict about cross street, prospect, any street, Route 9, but whatever we ask for, there's a lot of traffic all around. We can't just start giving variances, and this is a major variance. That's my opinion. I'm going to ask the board members to give their opinion.
Even though it's not a rainbow, it's on a dead end?
It's Whitesville. What's your opinion?
Yeah, I mean, my opinion is that our board is a one-acre zone. It's a failure in development. To come and ask for 121,000 square foot lot, 114,000 square foot lot is ridiculous. That's my opinion.
As the board is aware, obviously, once those roads are approved, this would be...
It's almost a brand-new subdivision.
It'll actually be a new map, a new zoning map if the roads are approved.
Actually, the new zoning map was attached to the ordinance. It is in public record.
Right, so you would probably get it from 20 minutes.
It would be fully conformed, I doubt.
That's a good idea.
And the applicant is willing, if the board has a severe concern with approving the application prior to the road improvement, we would be amenable to a condition in there that the road improvements have to be made.
That's not, we're not doing that.
I think we should weigh the most... I think, when we get rid of this, on that decision, we wanted the roads to be upgraded. All of the public's view of policy. Anybody from the public who would like to be heard on this application, please come forward.
Steven Spildinger.
Please speak into the mic. You have to be informed, and please state your name and spell your name.
My name is Steven Spildinger. S.P.E.E.N. S is in Sam, Z is in zebra, P is in Peter, I.L., Z is in zebra, I.N. is a Nancy, G.E.R.
Is the person next to you going after you, or with...
Depends if I run out of time.
Do you swear a firm testimony will give you further authority to hold it in number?
Uh, yes.
With the chairman's permission, please proceed.
Really, this has been going on, I think we've been here, Mr. Nyman, I believe was his name, many years ago. Probably three years ago, this is the saying, they're changing the zoning tomorrow. And as a result, I remember what he said then, that, I mean, I think they maybe changed the proposed zoning, that it wasn't even...
What's your address?
My address is 508 New Egypt Road. I am, my side yard is the proposed...
It's attached to Renewal.
Correct. So, you know, it's a bunch of, if you ever read the sign that they have over there for Corey Court, it says a bunch of one-acre lots is how it got sold. I understand zoning can change, but that's how it was sold to us, and all the lots were sold like that. And, you know, as of now, on Corey Court, they're all one-family homes, you know, on large properties. I, you know, if eventually they change the zoning in Lakewood, and you're allowed to build apartment buildings over there, okay. But that, whatever, we'll worry about that then. But to ask for a variance on something that is non-existent, because one day it might be existing, and they're willing to prove, I mean, it's just, right now you have one-acre lots, and the idea that it should ever be an R12, I don't even know what that means, that's...
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand, so you're going from one-acre properties to no-acre properties, you know, it just... But that's okay. However, the zoning board comes up with their plans, that people with big houses should live next to townhouses, that's not my deal. But as long, specifically, as long as there is no zoning law that says that, I don't see how you could give a variance to multiple dwelling units in one-acre home area.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And please vote on it, because I've been coming here for this thing for three years.
Thank you. Okay, next. What's your name?
Dina Spildinger.
Okay, we have a spelling error last time. Okay, you have to be informed then.
Your testimony will give you further authority to hold it in number?
Please proceed. No, you don't have to state it. Just, or speak loud, or speak into the mic. You have to have a record of everything you said.
Okay, so we live in lot 1.07, and if you look at the lots on Corey Court, which is where we're adjacent to the lot that we're asking for, that they're asking for variance, if you look at the acreage on Corey Court, you'll see that all the lots there are over an acre. Except for one that's 0.99 of an acre. And when we were sold the property, we were told that they're all going to be one-acre lots. We wanted a property where we have room, where we're not living on top of each other, and we want to keep it that way, as long as the zoning is not changed. We don't want another house. Especially since that lot on Corey Court that we're talking about is the smallest lot in the entire development. It started off as like, I believe it's like 0.80 something of an acre, so it started off as the smallest lot, and now they're looking to have that. So we would like to keep our space. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the public who would like to be heard, please come forward. Mr. Klein.
Do you affirm testimony will give you further authority to hold it in number?
I affirm. I came over here because of the first application, didn't have any sidewalks, but that was tabled, so... But I was here already, so I can't hold myself back, so I have to speak. The previous two speakers came against this development, but I didn't see them by the master plan when the zoning was changed. Actually, is the only thing that is holding up the zoning to change it to R12 is the road improvements. So if they were so concerned about their property, you were standing over here with a few seniors and screaming, they were there. I'm just mentioning something, is that a lot, a few people came out to scream for the rest of them, and when it's right in that backyard.
That's what you said for three years.
Not by the master plan. But then I was thinking is... Yes.
Mr. Chair, this doesn't work like this.
But the second point I was thinking is, the whole purpose of the ordinance that was put in, that we want the infrastructure, is not so much that we're against density. We needed infrastructure. So we gave an incentive for the developers to make infrastructure. I'm wondering, where is the infrastructure? Nobody's talking about it. No Cross Street, all the other ones. Now I understand what's going on. All these people that have R40, that wanted to stay R40, are fighting. Maybe they shouldn't put an infrastructure like this. The zoning will never be changed. I'm just putting in that point of view.
Are you ever happy?
My phone works out?
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else in the public who would like to be heard, signal?
Just a thought. When the whole master plan...
You don't get it on the phone?
No, no, I'm just finishing up. I was thinking about something I wanted to say, and I just remembered. When the whole master plan, when they did it, I didn't trust you guys. I really didn't trust you. I didn't trust you, that there had to be some kind of loophole the developers would have to be able to go around what you guys did. I really didn't trust you. And when I saw this application, I said, "This is it." They're coming in, and they are able to do it even that the zoning was not changed yet. They'll come in over here, do every two lots like this, and now I see the board... Again, I feel bad for the applicant, but I see the board standing on their words, and they really meant it what they did, and they really meant for the public, and I'm surprised, but again, and I was, in Hebrew, I don't know how you say it in English, but I was, but I apologized, and I really feel that you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
I don't know if there are any questions to that, but I could...
Anybody else in the public who would like to be heard, signal or close to the board? Okay.
So, Mr. Klein is correct. His application would have been before the master plan. The intent was requesting that those variances under the auspices of the C2 variance. And there are numerous subdivisions in this area that were approved under the C2 for higher density in this block in particular. So based upon that, the applicant does request that we continue and give you granted a variance. And I should note that there is a detention-based lot adjacent to us, which is a passive lot, not to be developed. So de facto, a portion of the density of these two lots, we are fully conforming with the master plan calls for. We request that.
Thank you very much. I would ask for a motion for this application.
I'll move a motion to deny the application.
Second. The last one makes a motion to deny.
I'll second.
Okay, I have two seconds. Mr. Meyer, second. Okay. He third. Okay, the roll call, please.
Mr. Grunberger.
No.
I'm sorry, does it clarify to anyone? The motion is denied. Do you want affirmative vote in support of this denial?
So you could phrase it like this, it would be, "Yes, I vote to deny the application," or, "No, I don't vote to deny the application."
Do you think that that should be...
What's your vote?
No.
Mr. Grunberger, sit down. Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Garfield?
No.
So, Mr. Garfield, are you in favor of approving this application or denying the application?
Denying.
You want to deny it. That's why I think... And Mr. Grunberger, do you want this application approved or denied?
Approved.
You want it approved. Okay, so I think you're... Mr. Garfield, a yes vote is, "Yes, I agree with the motion to deny the application." Is that what you're, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I just want to make sure you understand it, because it gets confusing. So you want the application denied?
Correct.
Okay, so yes, you vote in favor of the motion. Okay, yeah, okay, great. I'm sorry to push you through that, but I think...
Mr. Franklin wants a yes, correct? Mr. Stables?
Yes.
Mr. Plantford?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel?
Yes.
Mr. Renner? Mr. Isaacson?
Let's see.
Mr. Grapples?
Yes.
Mr. Myer?
Yes.
Okay, so I just, so there's no misunderstanding. Mr. Grunberger, you voted no because you would have liked to have seen the application approved. Everyone else voted yes because you wanted to see the application denied.
We had one intention.
And with one intention. Okay, those yeses means no, and no means yes votes are always confusing. Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Okay, for the record, the next one is number three. I'm stepping down. I have a conflict, and Mr. Renner is stepping down. I would ask Mr. Franklin if he could cheer number three.
Is the application number of consideration SD 2210, made by First State Department Associates, or Major Site for Five-Story Office, be carefully on the map?
All right, before we get into the application, I'd just like Ms. Morris and Mr. Vogt to make sure that we clarify and understand some. Ms. Morris, there was an issue with this when the case was first filed, as to what zone the building was in, correct? The map on Town Hall said that B2, correct?
When they had the case, it was originally submitted a year or two ago. There was an error, whatever, they're all parties involved, agreeing the map to an error in the zoning map that was unfiled. The applicant believed their property was in the B2 region before it was approved, in B2 zones. The zoning officer was going to do that, and I can be, initially processed the application, and it came into the B2 zone. When we heard a similar application, someone brought up the point that the zoning map actually showed a property in a different area zone rather than the B2. Turns out, the zoning map has been unfiled a number of years, incorrectly had a 222 zone line in disfavor of this property, and then our other current location happened. As such, this applicant chose to table their application indefinitely until that error was corrected, because they didn't want to risk a denial, as we had for a similar application with the toy store. In December of this year, the master plan, rezoning ordinance for, to use a logical term, was adopted by the committee, which also adopted a zone map that correctly reflects the zoning of this property. However, the adoption of that same ordinance that adopted the zone map showing this property in a correct B2 zone also enacted parking requirements in the B2 zone for two stories. The question is, where does that split the law?
So here is the consequence of that dilemma. If, if you, if the board takes the map that was unfiled, so if somebody went to City Town Hall and said, "Can I see the map? Back when this application was first filed, the map would have shown this building being not allowed." I think there's a discrepancy over that was an error. I think it's not, it's a difficult thing to say, well, the map unfiled was wrong, absent a court saying that or telling us that. If the applicant is allowed to proceed, or an applicant absolutely can proceed under the ordinance as amended, and the zoning map as amended after this board adopted a new master plan, there are things that go with that. And one of the things that goes with that is there are now parking requirements. So the original B2 zone, if the board wants to say that this wasn't a B2 zone, had no parking requirement. So we have a five-story office building in that zone with no parking. If the board determines that this is a new application filed under the new zoning map, and the present-day regulations apply, then it is in the correct zone, but they would have to comply with the parking requirements. I don't think they have parking requirements. And if, you know, and then the board would have the authority to grant or deny the application based on parking. So I just want to lay that out there, because I think that's an issue. I think Mr. Pfeffer is prepared to address this. So I don't know if the board has any questions about that, or if you need any further preliminary comments, or...
I think we should vote on that before we even get into the application.
That's, who's chair?
Mr. Franklin.
Oh, Mr. Franklin is, okay, I'm sorry. You're not in the middle, that threw me. So, well, that's the... not in the middle. That threw me. So, well, that's the chair's prerogative to manage and run the meeting in, in the way that you deem appropriate. I would at the minimum, however, allow the applicant to address this issue before calling for a vote on that issue.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, so I agree with just about everything that was laid out by Ali and Mr. Jackson. We originally had made this application approximately 18 months ago. As you may recall, I also represented the neighboring property, same exact application. I know we don't like to talk about this application. That original application was denied. We've gone to Tom's River. We filed an appeal and the judge overturned the decision and it granted based upon the zoning laws. This neighboring property owner indicated the same, more or less same exact application, variance-free, under the, under the zone that we believe that we were in, or that we weren't. The board deemed this complete. We had a, this goes under the old technical hearing. We're here for the board. That went forward. As Ali did indicate, there was another application that had an objector that raised this issue, saying that they were in the wrong zone. At that point, I believe Ali reached out. I believe myself or my engineer, McFarlane, indicated that we had an issue here. At the same time, the township has acknowledged, and I asked Ali if she agreed to agree at that point, it was acknowledged that there was a mistake that everyone knew about. I am going to mark A1 at this time, which is just a zoning display. It was posted about the zoning map May 3, 2006, and the zoning map December 7, 2017. Now, as you can see, the site is indicated. It shows that it was in years in the ROP. It was supposed to be in the B2. There was, the township, every several years, updates the zoning map. And this is by law. They always make sure they're correcting it. There was an error. The prior engineering company that updated made a mistake. The township for years knew about this and kept saying, great, we don't update it every year. When we update the map, we will go ahead and we will correct it. When this was, issue was raised approximately 18 months ago, maybe a little bit less, a year, a little more than a year, about 18 months ago, when this issue was raised, we agreed that we would table the application. Let's see if we correct. As indicated last, past this meeting, I don't like to go ahead and sue the township. There's no need to do it. I worked with the township. I spoke with the township attorney. At that point, they were in the process of updating the zoning maps and correcting this error to make it that it was in the correct zone. It's also very important to note that when the zoning map changed, when they went from, from one zone to the next, no notice was ever given to any of these property owners, which is required by law. They didn't do it. There is no record of any reason why they did. It was a complete mistake. I again confirmed that with Steve Seater in his office and Adam Hetzel, who indicated, yes, we were, we did, the township, there was a mistake made and we were fixing it. I indicated, at this point, would you agree to change it? They said, just hold off. We're in the process of updating it. I said, no problem. I waited a month, two months, three months. We kept going, adding update every couple of weeks or every, every month or so. I would go back to the township attorney and ask him, you know, again, my client wants to know what I should do. Should I file this action? Trying to avoid legal fees for my client and also fees to taxpayers for no reason, to have a lawsuit that everyone acknowledges is wrong. When we got a little closer, they were actually getting close to listing it for a reading to update the map. At that point, they also said, you know what? The master plan is moving along. It's progressing pretty quickly. We're going to just fix it all in one, in one shot. We're going to fix the zoning map in the master plan so we don't have to deal with it. And just, we're going to have it done at that point. Just hold off. At that point, again, I told my client the same thing. I said, great, we don't have to spend legal fees. This should be, this works for everybody. I have no problem. That was done. They corrected the zoning map. And as you can see, it was not, this board knows the master plan process. This was not a question of, hey, we're going to change the zone, not change the zone. That was never came before anybody's issue. They were correcting an error that was there. The board, obviously, the master plan, put another condition on this whole area downtown. Last time I was asked to say, you know, how are we cherry picking different parts of the, of the master plan? I promise you, we're not sitting here to try and cherry pick anything from the master plan. If we hadn't waited and we just said, fine, we filed the lawsuit, we would have gone in, everyone acknowledged to me, including township attorney, it was an error. We had no problem with it. Just we were fixing it. In fact, they fixed it. Now they threw something else on it. Our position is that, that should be there going forward. Has nothing to do with this application. So that's only our, our path to what was put on from Ali and Mr. Jackson. I would ask them, I know you were familiar, this binary standing was, in the zoning office, everyone knew. This prior year...
I don't know that we knew of it before it was discovered at this time, but it was well-known that there were errors in that map.
Mr. Pfeffer, I'm going to ask you this as the attorney for the applicant. I'm also going to ask your planner slash engineer the same thing. But I, I, one question is, when you put this matter on hold, bannished, what was the mechanism that you, that you did that? Did the board consent to it? Did you send a letter?
Yes. This corresponds with your office and the board. It was a question because it ended the prior application, but not the one I did, the one that I denied.
But did the board consent to the matter being held in a bannish for 18 months? Is that accurate?
My, my recollection is that most likely I got some sort of email either from Mr. Pfeffer or Mr. McFarlane saying we're going to table. I probably put a note on the agenda that says, application is tabling.
Okay. Because that, and that might be significant as we go forward, you know, whether the board consented to that act we asked or whether that was done unilaterally. The record will speak for itself. I really don't have any details.
My, I said that was the original thing. The question was posed. They had an email. It was, are you going forward tonight? Or because at this point, the board is going to vote to, because you're in a different zone. It's totally different application. And I said at that point, no, we rather, we don't want to go forward. We want to correct this error because we want to keep retaining our rights under what we believe was correct.
All right. And then the next question, the two questions are for you and for Mr. McFarlane. The, the zone map, just point to me on the zone map that if, if I were a neighbor or if I, someone who lived in town, I was thinking about buying property nearby, what map would be on file when you went and made this application? If I went up to the window and said, let me see the zoning map, what, what map would be there?
Again.
Do you swear from testimony before the board with the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. Frank McFarlane, professional engineer, professional flyer. I refer to, to exhibit A1, which is the zoning disparity that we, that we had prepared. The question related to, if somebody came in and did, you know, dated application or filed, which map would they be referred to? They would have been referred to the zoning map that was unfiled and prepared in May 2006 that showed the property correctly not within the B2 zone.
Okay. That's, and this is a legal, you know, that's, that's what I understood. And looking at your exhibit, it would be the one on the left side of the exhibit. So if I were buying next door, or not I, if one were buying next door or concerned about what was going to be built next to them, let's say they were buying an office downtown or a store and they want to say, you know, what's allowed here and what's not allowed here? They would think on this parcel that a five-story building with no parking was prohibited. Wouldn't, would they get that impression?
They would certainly refer to what's ever permitted in the ROP zone.
Which does not allow five-story buildings with no parking.
No. Just to clarify, it does permit building. It does not exempt from parking.
Okay. I'm sorry. They, they, I'll rephrase that.
If you had looked, this was the map, if you looked at the map just prior.
Right.
It showed something different. It changed overnight.
I, I get that. But I think one of the issues is zoning is not only a covenant with the people who own property. It's also a covenant with everyone else who owns nearby and adjoining properties. So it also sets their expectations as to what their community might grow and develop like. And, and I would respectfully submit that somebody who was in that area might have the expectation that a five-story building is not going to be plopped down with no parking. So that's, that'll be up to the board to decide. I just make that observation. And I don't think that was raised on the other case that, that you handled. Now, I also have this question for Mr. McFarlane, his planner. You know, now, now we're going to have two five-story office buildings right near each other with no parking between them. If, if...
It is your option.
Yeah. But I, I mean, how many square feet is that? And as a, you know, I, I think the board, I don't think it would be controversial for me to state that there is a traffic congestion and parking problem in Lakewood, probably worse than anywhere else in Ocean County, maybe as bad as anywhere else in the state. Do you think that's a fair statement?
I'd rather that is, that, that is something we've, again, run into our...
Well...
We're talking about the zone and the date of our application.
But the, the question for Mr. McFarlane, I mean, just from a planning and, and engineering perspective, does, does it, is there any, you know, what's the benefit of having this much square footage without parking?
Well, this is a question that's, that is, at this point, not what we're discussing. If, if the, the reason I say that is, if we are in the right zone and our application was in, the township had ordinance on file, and our application under that ordinance is a fully conforming application. We're going to give the testimony by...
Okay. I, I agree with that. But I think the board has to make a threshold determination here and they...
That, that contains the viewers. So what about the question at hand? The question at hand has to do with the content, the application, the zone, and everything that we felt we did right. We were trying to, we came in, above board, fully conforming, not trying, not trying to take anything other than what's on the, on file and on record. Halfway through the application, someone raised the issue. We said, no problem. We worked with the township. We tried being good and try not to cost extra money and file a lawsuit on both sides, with my client and the township. And now we're swinging it, going, trying to go forward because they did correct. They did, they did everything they told me they were going to do. Township said, just wait. We're going to correct. That's great. They also put something else that has nothing to do with this application.
And, and I appreciate that. And Mr. Pfeffer, I appreciate your indulgence. And I'm not trying to come across as advocating the other side of this. However, your client has an attorney of voice looking at the arguments that support your client's view of this. I'm just trying to provide the board with, you know, some of the other ways that other people might look at this. And what the board will decide will be up to the board. So, Mr. Franklin, that's all I have. You, you know, I, thank you for your...
Gentlemen, you just heard the discussion. Do you want to proceed with this application?
Well, I think you have to proceed with it no matter what. It's a question of whether you proceed as one with no parking or where no parking is required or one where parking is required.
Well, if parking is required in the notices.
Other than the notices.
I would also ask, is there something that, that you've heard tonight that you would like clarification of from being township attorney or someone else in, in the township? Then I would get out here to get it. I mean, this is the first time we've had this discussion on the record. Last time we were supposed to be here, there wasn't a forum, so we didn't hear. So this is the first time I've discussed it with the board.
And the application was in the RPO or the B2?
No, the B2. Because that's what a B2 requires parking or not?
Does not. It does not have.
The B2 did not used to have parking requirements as of December when the map, when it changed or not, and now required parking, right? So it's...
And the map, when the, the map on file in Town Hall, when this application was first filed, did not show it in the B2 zone. Now, everyone seems to...
So the notice given was for a less restricted...
The notice was given was for a fully conforming...
Under the B2...
Under the B2, which is what everyone was understanding.
But the township map did not show B2, it showed RPO.
On the zoning map, there was a mistake. Correct. It's RPO. That there was a mistake that wasn't picked up on. We went forward before this board. We had, under the old hearing, we had a technical hearing in front of the board. Everything was going forward. Because that's what everyone believed through the zoning office, that it was there.
All right. If I could just jump in briefly. When we started, started the application, started looking at the property, frankly, I've been doing work in this town for a long time, but we can't transport this mine ore quite a few years back. But when we first started looking at this application, we looked at the zoning map and it scratched my head. And I said, wait a minute. Everybody knows that this first block along Clifford Avenue is in the B2 zone. So I called Ali and talked to her about it. And she said, you know what? Everybody knows that this first block along Clifford Avenue is in the B2 zone. And we talked about, both of us, both of our understanding that there had been drafting errors in the map that were, that were prepared by Burzall in 2006. So I believe Ali did some research and confirmed with, with France Sebel at the time. And we talked about it on the concrete building. So, you know, can I submit the application? We were in agreement that, that, that the property was in fact supposed to be, you know, in or was located in the B2 zone. So we prepared the application based upon that. At that time, when the application was submitted in, I believe it was September of 2016, that B2 zone did not have any parking requirements. So this application would be protected by the time of application statute, which says that the applications are judged based upon the zoning that's in effect at the time the application was filed. So to me, that's really the question that we're trying to answer is, you know, was the property, you know, in the B2 zone at the time the application was made and if it ever was, what are the standards that the application is to be judged against? Our opinion is that the property is located and always has been located in the B, in the B2 zone. And that the time of application statute holds that this application should be judged against the, the zoning standards that were, that were in effect at the day the application was filed, which would be September of 2016, which does not require off-street farming.
You mentioned it was a court about it and much of the judge rules that...
No, so there we go. The...
The next story.
Next story. You guys have denied the judge that it has based upon...
So the one next door that was denied out of the county may, there were no issues from the zone.
This line was denied.
It was denied because the board didn't like that they weren't proposing any parking. And a judge overturned that because it's fully informed, even though it wasn't providing parking. So the board was forced to retreat. But that is a completely different situation from what we're discussing here. I don't know why it's denial.
And just to add, add up the level of detail to this display, it's maybe a little hard to remember to see that. I can pass it up to you if you'd like. The, the, the zone line that's shown on the May 3, 2006 zoning map shows very much, we come across several lots within, you know, within a first block, a half block, but at an angle, not following lot lines. It really, really made no sense whatsoever. And then we draw the wall of Clifford Avenue instead of being drawn along, along, along the lots, the first lots, the wall, which was directed in 2017.
I have a question. Mr. Pfeffer, you mentioned that they added on this parking requirement and that has nothing to do with this application. What do you make of that? Nothing's...
Meaning it's our, because of our application was, was put in approximately 18 months ago, September of 2016, as Grant indicated, the time of application rule, we go by the ordinance that was in place at that time. So my, what I'm saying that...
Didn't the application was submitted then?
Yeah, no, it's been on, on record since September of, of...
And at that time, there was no parking requirement?
Correct.
And I only brought up the other option. Just to remind the board what, just so they can familiarize themselves with the area, that this was, this is property right next door.
So they might know what happens if they try to deny this one?
Which resulted in that, that...
Now, Mr. Grunberger, just if I can comment on that. Just to, to try to, you know, lay it out in order. The, the, the zone that was shown on the map when this was filed, this was filed under the wrong zone, you know, it was not permitted. They believe that this, the map was somehow in error. And they believe that by putting their place in line there, that their grandfather, they relate back to that application. There's also a view where you could say when the zoning was changed to correct the map to B2, there were a host of factors that went with that, which included a requirement for parking. So if you want to take the B2 zone, then you have to take the parking.
The correction was really, it was mistaken prior to that.
I'm sorry?
It really wasn't before.
I don't know that it was a mistake. You know, and I think, I think if that's the map that's on file in Town Hall, I don't know how you can just say that that's a mistake. That's...
So the question really is then, is it a mistake?
I don't know.
So if the board would like, I can go back to the township attorney to, to get it in writing. I confirmed with them. They did agree. That's exactly what happened.
And can I, can I interrupt for one minute? And I'm not so sure that even if it was, somehow the map did not reflect what they wanted it to reflect, I don't know that that's a mistake. When you look at, that is what's in file. That's what's on, that's what's in the books. And that's what everybody else relied on when they...
So we...
John referencing the property next door, which the judge ruled wasn't a B2 zone.
No, that's different, that's different situation that not applied to this situation that we now...
That, that...
No, no, no. What I'm saying is...
That case was taken to court as a fully conforming application with the board...
For which zone?
It was not...
There was never a question.
There's never, there's never a question.
No. So my question is, if, if that lot was in B2, then this one is also in B2, is it not?
I don't know. Well...
No?
That's my question.
No.
That's more so a long line of why...
I think, I think the...
And it is a mistake because these are properties touching, they touch each other. And as, as Grant indicated, the angle just, and someone drew, and just went on an angle right across this...
People are the same thing. They're trying to figure out, it makes sense that it was a mistake because of that adjacent property, which wasn't...
But now you say that if it was a mistake, that's what was on file.
Right. I...
No, 100%. No, 100%, if there's a zero, well... John?
I can confirm that, I spoke with France Siebel, he tagged records, referencing properties in B2. It was general consensus among the township attorney and me and the zoning officer that the zoning map at the time, this application was wrong. However, I understand John's point in that oftentimes, the township can't just decide to repeal ordinances that they cast because they think they did something incorrectly. Essentially, these things stand until they're fought in court. So, even though the zoning map may have had an error on it, it still feels the map that was on file, and it's not the wrong zoning map until the court says...
Right, that's, that's the zoning map that's on file, and I would argue that that is the law of the land when that map is adopted and put on file.
Along those lines, I was thinking, I'm happy she reminded me that there's the tax records for all these properties indicating that they were in the B2. To change it out of the B2 zone, the township would have needed to provide a notice and send it to all the property owners, letting them know they're changing.
That's a whole different issue, requires different research, and that's if you want...
I'm taking that as a position, but those notices, those were never done because it was a mistake. And if the board would like further clarification from the township, unless they're not up, I'm just letting you know that I'm willing to go ahead and continue to work to get the proof that this was in a B2 throughout this whole time period.
Mr. Chairman, do you believe that it was in a B2 zone?
Yes.
Do we have the authority to make that or say that it now becomes a B2 or retroactive as it was a B2?
Well, that's, that's why, you know, I, I think the board has to determine if the new regulations apply to this or not. Are they grandfathered? You know, are you satisfied that this should be considered under the B2 zoning that existed before the recent changes to the master plan where no parking was required? Or do you say that, you know, you're going under the amended map? The amended map makes it B2. Before, before the map was amended, it wasn't B2. Since you're, have a new application based on the new zoning, you must comply with the parking regulations. Therefore, you have to provide parking.
Are there other property that's subject?
No, the, the reason why, the change, the change, yes. However, this is the only application that I'm aware of, that's dependent.
The application where the error was noticed was denied because John Felton, this board denied jurisdiction, because even though our agreement agrees with the B2, the board had to rely on the current zoning map. So, that application was denied because of that. At that time, this application said, "We don't want to be denied on our table until you fix the map."
All right, gentlemen, what do you want to do? Want to proceed first?
Well, John, I would submit that had Mr. Pfeffer been told 18 months ago that we have to go with the map that's on file, he probably would have done something about it then. And now, 18 months later, when he's been told, you know, by members of the township that, "Don't worry, we're changing, we're changing, we're changing," I think that took away his, his opportunity to appeal it, you know, legally. And I would say that under that, it's, it was, it had been submitted in part of the time, and it should be grandfathered and not be subject to the new B2 regulations. So, I would put forward a motion that if it's, if, you know, and Mr. Pfeffer has stated that he can provide, you know, proof of correspondence with the township, that it is a B2 zone. And, Mr. Chairman, you yourself have said that you believe it's a B2 zone. I, from what I've heard, it also sounds like it's a B2 zone. I would put forward a motion to allow the application to proceed under the B2 zone.
Okay, move ahead.
If we have a writing from the township?
I would, we would agree that we would, I'll get proof from the township attorney that, and this is what they indicated to me, so I have no problem saying it, that there was an error at the time of the application, and it was properly in the B2 zone.
You understand that the consequence of that is they have a byright application for no parking with a five-story office building there.
Well, we can vote on that when we get...
Now, once you...
You're really handcuffed, girl.
You have the property application, you have the...
That's why I'm trying, we're going to put our boots on, two separate questions.
Let me, let me just go through the con... When, if you make the threshold determination that this is B2 and it was always B2, you've basically sealed the deal, that they don't have to get any parking.
How can that affect our decision? That shouldn't affect our decision.
Because they will have a, if the B2 applied here all along, and they're grandfathered back to the B2 as it existed when they first filed the application, there are no parking requirements.
I understand, but that's got to factor on the decision.
I understand your question.
Are you saying the last one, but did I...
I've got two conversations about that. Mr. Grunberger and Mr. Jackson, that's what...
Yeah, please, please. Mr., no, Mr. Grunberger, go ahead.
I understand your point, but my question, how should that affect our decision? Why should that, that's a separate question. This is one question, and the fact that there's going to be consequences, that's a different question. Why should that happen in our decision on this question?
That's a, an observation that you're making, that's a fair observation. But I'd like to look at the consequences of what I'm deciding before I decide it, if there is discretion or if I don't want to...
Can we use that as a deciding factor legally?
Well, I think you, I think when you make a, excuse me, I'm speaking to a board member. When, when, you know, a lot of times when you have to make a legal factual decision, it's, you have to understand the consequences. Like, even a judge sometimes will advise a jury as to the ultimate outcome of what a charge means. Because I think it's difficult to decide things in the vacuum without understanding their consequences. And, you know, as the person advising this board, if you decide that, I don't want to hear, well, I don't want to hear after. I want to prevent it from being fairly said afterward. Well, you never told me what the consequence of that was. I would have, you know, I don't want a five-story office building downtown with no parking. I just want you to know, if you make that, Mr. Pfeffer, can I please come? You'll get your chance, I promise. If, if, I just want you to understand what the consequence of your decision is. Mr. Pfeffer, and, and Mr. Franklin has to recognize, not the motion, but I... I've been speaking to a board member. Mr. Franklin, do you want to recognize Mr. Pfeffer? What do you want to do right now?
Yes, I think you should.
I appreciate that. All I'm trying to say is to say, oh, if you guys say it's in the B2, just know what your repercussions are. That's not the question for the board first. The first board question is, is it in the B2 or not? If you need, if the board needs more information, and you feel you want to get more clarification, then we'll go back. I believe the motion says that it's asking me also to, as a condition, provide a copy of that, of a letter from the township attorney acknowledging that it's in the B2, and I'm saying, "I'm filing that." But then, then say, "Yes, if you vote, just know what you're voting for coming back." The board still has another opportunity to hear the application. So, there's two different questions. I just want that noted. And I don't think you should then be saying, "Okay, if you vote yes, be careful what you're going to get," you know, five minutes.
I think, Mr. Franklin, there was a motion on the board.
Yeah. And John, I appreciate what you said. I would just, you know, we have to look at the alternative as well. The alternative is that Mr. Pfeffer ends up suing, I believe, right?
Well, I don't know what the consequences are of the way that this was held in advance. You know, I don't know if that was something that the board passed on, that's something that has to be analyzed.
Yeah, you can't approve something just because you...
No, 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 no.
Wait, wait, Mr. Pfeffer, get the information from the township attorney. Too much to handle here.
I, if you would like to, if you like to be to get an opportunity to get the letter from the township attorney acknowledging it's in the B2, I have no problem.
It's a kind of management statement that there, I don't believe there's any, any conflict in whether or not it's in the B2. Everyone seems to be agreeing.
Well, why, why don't we see that in a path, in a documentation, chapter and verse proofs? Lay that out to the board and show them why this was a mistake, and let's, let's get information about whether the zoning map preempts that anyway. Like, give us, give us your legal argument why, you know, the zoning applies as opposed to the map. I'll call it the zoning, but I mean...
There's a different thing. So, I have a problem getting a letter from the township attorney acknowledging it's in the B2. If that's what the board wants, that's what I'll get. If you're asking for a rule or something else. Yeah, okay, I want to be very clear. We have no problem getting a letter acknowledging it's in the B2, and it was a mistake.
I probably have that in file right now, if that's what the board wants to see. I just don't see how that's making a difference on whether or not we use new rules with the new map or whether we can disregard the new rules.
Well, if it was in the B2, and it was a mistake at that time, then the old rules would apply. That our position would be the old rules apply.
But then you wouldn't have been able to use the old map, and you wouldn't have had to do that.
Yeah, why, why didn't you go forward again? Because, you know, I...
We told you, because your office indicated to me that at this point, the map, the state, it's an error, let's get some clarification here. I said, "No problem." You have agreed to table the application? And we said, "Yes, no problem." We waived our time. Because all of the... Yes, the Zima was not reported. But I thought that...
I think that has to bring some... I'm sure Mr. Pfeffer would not, Mr. Grunberger would.
Yeah, no doubt.
My copy is a better...
The one that was denied, Mr. Jackson said that we're past relying on maps on file, which is why this application didn't go forward at that time. So, the question is, now that they're relying on a new map of 2016, do they have to comply with the new rules for parking that were also adopted in December in the same...
And my opinion remains, for the reasons that I stated tonight, that the map that's on file is the law of the land, because people have expectations to come from looking at that map.
If, if the new map were adopted, you know, a month earlier than the new parking requirements, we wouldn't have any discussion, because it was often in the...
Correct. And my own position was, the only reason why the township, we did do something sooner was the township said, "Just wait, we're combining it, go on." And I would have done something sooner had the township told me, by the way, that we changed. I wouldn't have...
And you have documentation on that as well?
Those are, I'm, I'm, I'll give a certification, and I'll get that from, I have a competition with the township attorney numerous times on this.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I think Mr. Pfeffer should, should lay out a factual pattern when he comes back, including a letter from the township attorney stating how it was mistaken. Lay out the history of it.
Yes.
Lay out the history of it, because obviously there was a zoning map that, that predated May 30th, 2006. And lay out, lay out the whole history, so we could see.
Lay out the whole history, and then we'll proceed with it.
We can submit that in advance, too, if you want to look at it.
We have no objection to that.
Maybe bring the other, the old zoning map that predated 2006, and this way we could get...
There's all part of the motion.
Yes, we could get a...
We would, at this point, we're just asking if we can table the application. We will waive our, our time. We will, we will read the, read notice, once, in fact, to get this information. I don't want to give a date now. I will submit it, Ally, and Mr. Jackson, and I'll ask them to give you the date. Do you want to read that? I mean, we can...
I think the other thing would be beneficial. One thing that we should consider is that the plans as admitted don't show the parking violation at all. So, if the board, if the board, if the board, or Harry's letters cover that. So, if the board is fervent, because they're going to hear it, but they're going to hear it under different regulations, will need a review letter, which includes a parking calculation that you have to plead. Again, I don't know if that's going to incorporate all the things.
I'd rather, that's a whole different application. We're, we're going forward with this application. And once I get that information together, get Ally and John, and ask for the new date, I have no problem with that.
And if there's any, if there's any case law that you can provide in a situation like this? You know, the more detail you can provide, the better. If there's no case law, then we can just leave it up to the board to decide, you know, whatever. The more information you provide, the better, I think, right, for everybody?
We will put together a package for the board.
Okay, you want to vote on this?
I'm requesting to table it.
Oh, you're asking for table?
Table it to get this information the board wants, and I will...
Sure, I'll, I'll move motion to the...
I'll say it.
All right. Table it in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, so move.
Motion to postpone this.
Okay, number four. Victor, would you like to report?
Yes, I would, Chairman.
The main clubs, give me just one second, give me the right one, very... Okay.
Okay. This is a good point, referring to Part 7, 16 letter. First, we want to comment on, it's under running, we say, one of the submission waivers. They have two, the car video, so you as well as proposed improvements. The basis of the waiver request is that the sheet is live, which is the back of the title. Based upon that, it's...
So, you will read the waivers?
Correct.
We have a motion to go along with that.
So, move.
The plans will move to the minor seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
So, aye. Okay, waivers approved.
So, the zoning was in running, we're two second. Page 3, reported, I need indication with regard to lot 4.21, 4.21, excuse me. The outlaying engineer pays for parts involved in rebuilding the front portion of the house in reply. Therefore, we recommend that the variance be granted for the existing non-conformance of short-term capacity shortly, except orderly for what index on lots 3.04, 4.21. Also, we note under off-street parking, 4.1, can only accommodate two vehicles. Is there a work that I want to make before this?
Gladlines, professional engineer, professional planner, and language research.
And your client is yours?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Give me one second question. Okay, let's go on. Okay, our application tonight is to subdivide a, the rear portion of lot, it's existing 3.03, and transfer to the rear of existing lot, sorry.
How many lots are there currently?
There's currently two lots.
And how much, after the realignment, how many lots do we have?
Two lots.
Nothing's changed, just realigning?
Nothing's changed. And on the, on the Google maps that I passed out to the board members and to the attorneys and the secretary, it outlines a box in red. That's the area that'll get transferred from one lot to the other lot.
From which lot do we have?
It's from, if you look at the map, it's being transferred from the lot on the east or left to the lot on the right or the west. I do. So, yes, from the, from the right lot to the left. Why are you doing this? It, it just gives the, the owner of 14 Primrose, like a larger backyard, and, and 19 Primrose is kind of this odd L-shaped lot with a piece in the back. So, as you can see, the, on the, on the aerial map that we handed out, the owner of lot 19 hasn't really used that rear portion. That's the wooded, they, so it really doesn't affect his, his use of his lot.
You're not creating any new variants with this lot?
There's no new variants. We acknowledge that the, the deck on lot 9, sorry. The deck on, on new lot 304 is within the rear setback. At the time that was constructed, that was the permitted, you could have a lot in a setback as long as we close certain height, and it wasn't part of the lot. Same is the condition with new lot 21. That, that house, that deck's slanted over the...
It's both existing conditions.
All existing conditions. Same with the front setback. It's really the brick on the front of the house is just over the lot. So, those are all existing conditions, we're not changing any of those. Same with parking, parking works, you draw the...
How many parking spaces you have each lot?
The driveways, when you draw out a nine-by-18 space, it only fits two parking spaces per block, per driveway, and the garage, so there's three per, per lot. In reality...
It's a single-family house.
It's a single-family house. So...
It's a big lot, and you can only get three, three parking spaces?
Well, it's wide enough, but it's just, it's just slightly long. And again, this was done before we really started worrying about parking and parking where the ordinance was changing. This subdivision goes back 10 years or more.
Are they going to be based in the apartment?
I don't believe they're wrong.
Another question, do you have sidewalks, sir?
Existing sidewalks, existing curbs, existing shade trees.
We're not going to run that base, so that...
No, no, we'll...
It's a part of the... Okay. Make sure it's any resolutions, so...
We would acknowledge that for the resolution, there's no basement park, so three, three subdivisions.
Okay, any questions, any board members? Sign on, anybody from the public, anybody from the public that could be heard in this application, please come forward.
Before I pass away, before I call for an announcement.
Are you fine? Just there that there's two houses over here that have basements.
No basements. It's finished.
Basements, alright, basements.
And they will go into the category like the rest of Lakewood, thousands of thousands of thousands of townhomes that have basements, finished basements, that everybody claims that they're not renting it out, because if they would have rented it out, what must, would have happened is they would have all got violations, because none of them have sprinklers, these are not tunnels, yeah, these are not tunnels, right? These are single family homes, so technically is, they could legally rent it out, so now their claim is that they're renting it out, but they're not legally renting it out because they don't want the parking requirements, so if you want to put them into this category like the rest of Lakewood, you've given the waiver of parking, go ahead, but be on record, this is, this is just a moment, the guy has a finished basement and he's not renting it out, and you believe it? I'm not, I have nothing against it, let him go on record, he wants a parking waiver, because it's finished, and it's there, and it's existing, and they have on-street parking, let him make your own argument, but to come tell me is that somebody has a Lakewood, a finished basement, and not renting it out, you're putting your head in the sand, I'm just, I'm just bringing out a point, because when we come to this board, I have four minutes, God bless, when we, we come to this board, and we keep complaining, why don't you require the developers to put in the sprinklers, like this, we could rent out the basements legally, we don't have to lie, like saying, oh, I have a basement, I'm not renting it out, like this, if something happens, every, we is not concerned something happens because it wouldn't be a safety issue because of no sprinkler requirements, but might be putting his, their head in the sand in the rest of Lakewood, who claiming is, you don't know about the sprinklers, you don't know about the rentable basements, same thing over here, and you're just saying is, oh, the guy said, you know, I don't have a rentable basement, you just believe him like you believe the rest of Lakewood that has basements, and why do we have a parking problem with all the?
Please be quiet, audience, we cannot hear.
Why do we have a, a, a parking problem in all the high-density development areas, all these duplexes? Because the developer comes in, oh, we're not finishing the basement, we put a sprinkler in, it's not going to be, it's going to be family members in the basement, and they're finishing it, no, 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 it's not being rented, and you all know the truth, you know?
Mr. Clon, can I just, before the four minutes, are you saying that every single finished basement in Lakewood is rented out, is that what you're saying?
In duplexes?
No, in, any, is every single finished basement in Lakewood rented out?
The question is if it's one or two bedrooms.
So again, is the answer a no question, are you saying that every finished basement in Lakewood?
I'm saying is, if you have a finished basement with two bedrooms and a kitchen, and this, we would say is that ninety-five percent is rented out.
Ninety-five percent?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, I'll put it even better to you, I have, I live in a townhome.
Mr. Clon, is it yes or no question?
My basement is not rented out, no.
You're from the five percent.
You're from the five percent, maybe he's also from the same five percent.
But he claims his basement is finished.
Yeah, he's from the five percent of finished basement.
No, my basement is not finished.
Okay, but are you saying that every single finished basement in Lakewood is rented out, that's all I want to know, if that's what you're saying?
What do you think?
I happen to know for a fact there are people that have finished basements that are not rented out, with kitchens and with bedrooms and everything, so I will say he's from that five percent that you said.
Okay, thank you.
No, I took away, I took away thirty seconds.
No, 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 I, I.
No, I just, I think you need to say that every single finished basement in Lakewood that's, that's finished is rented out.
My statement is that we have thousands of basements in Lakewood that are illegally rented because we didn't put in sprinklers.
That's a different statement.
And that, you would agree to that.
Okay, thank you.
You don't want to be on record in saying if yes or no.
That's a different statement.
But that's the statement.
Before you said something else.
Okay, thank you very much.
So you're agreeing with ninety-five percent of my statements if you're just a five percent left?
You have statistical data.
What?
You have statistical data, I don't.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else in the public that might be heard in this application, sign no or close this application. I just want to note that, like I asked you before, Clon, there are two houses existing, and you're staying with them, you just have a back piece of property shifting from left to right, to the right.
That's correct.
Nobody's building it.
There's nothing being built, there's no apartments being added, we're just moving a approximately sixty, about sixty square, like thirty-six.
If you would ever.
From one lot, property owners to the other lot.
If you ever throw down the house, you know that they have to totally confirm maybe they're doing it on us.
Now, yes.
The whole lot's only sixty thousand square feet.
Right. So. We've been back at the building, if the house is staying here, regardless of new homes.
Okay. I understand, because it's existing, okay, I would ask for motion on this application.
I'll move the full application.
Okay, Mr. Rennett?
Wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Please be quiet, the audience.
I did not give a motion or a protest.
The motion was to approve by Mr. Rennett, Mr. Flansman second, roll call please.
Mr. Rennett?
Yes.
Mr. Parkfield?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Parkfield, answer for my.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, now, Ally, I see number five and number six.
Number five and number six, trying to go hand in hand, but as we see sometimes like this, I think technically the board has to act on the subdivision first, if they can act on it, they change it.
Okay.
There's some barriers associated with, we got the page, um, that Terry, since I will, since I will, since I will, we're going to take that.
So Mr. Jackson, you agree that we should listen out separately?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I mean, they can, they can kind of combine it together, but you have to vote on it.
I think the subdivision, Terry, is simple, I don't see, and then they'll decide on that.
A lot of times the proofs are put together, depending on what you want to do.
Okay, so let's listen, Ally says his fairly simple, let's go. So Terry, would you like to go through the report just on the subdivision?
We'll start the subdivision here.
Okay.
Our subdivisions, latter day is March nineteen, and under subdivision waivers, we have two which are minor, they both equal in map scale, we have no problem with that.
Okay, so we have a motion to go along with the regulation for the waivers?
Okay.
Okay, is the table office it?
Okay, sorry.
One second, all in favor of the waivers?
Aye.
Okay.
When we talk about design waivers, and then you're going to hear the application proposed.
What, the zoning, you want to go zoning first?
I'm under the design waiver section three, our subdivision letter, relative to the subdivision, the design waiver with regard to curbing along frontages, as indicated in our letter, granting a lot of curbing that along Avenue State, some concrete exists along country Cedar Bridge, as long as the applicant proposes to install curbing along Cedar Bridge Avenue, finding a new lot one point oh five, we could accept the request of design waiver from the other property. Secondly, sidewalk along property frontages, we indicate, country sidewalks exist along High Street, meandering avenue, all packed in this, on the Avenue State frontage, again, as long as the applicant proposes to install sidewalk along Cedar Bridge, for a new lot one point oh five, we could accept that waiver.
So what is the waiver?
The design waiver is providing sidewalk along all the frontages in progress, what presents is you have sidewalk already on portions, will basically say, basically, fill in where it's not, that they would need the append of, to be designed.
As well as on Avenue of the States.
Correct.
So technically the whole thing will have sidewalks and curbs?
If they do what we're, we're referring to in the last.
Well, the subdivision is for a very large parcel that runs along Avenue of the State from Cedar Bridge to High Street, the site plan, I believe, based on what Terry's saying, where it will be proposing sidewalk is just to the corner by Cedar Bridge and Avenue.
Not, not the whole?
I'm not sure about curb sidewalk or the length of Avenue of the State or High Street.
It's the length of their property or the length where they're proposing?
I'm sure they go.
I'm going to here passing my shore as to what they, what they, I just want to put it in the track, these are the waivers, I have the perfect understanding, just ask the application for it now.
We're not?
I'm not asking for any action.
Right, we're not voting on any design waivers.
Continuing on with my subdivision, there's a design waiver for providing street trees along the property frontages, for communication from the applicant, the applicant requested a design waiver, the street tree along the undeveloped heavily wooded frontages of the site, being new lots one point oh two and one point oh four, taken by the township, the applicant agrees to propose street trees along the frontages of the new lot, one point oh five, one point oh six, associated with future site plan application, and finally, the waiver results by providing shade trees and utilities along private frontages, the applicant's engineering case, that the design waiver requested for shade tree utilities along lots one point oh two and one point oh four, with the township, and that the requirement of subdivision, it now incorporates one point oh five, and one point oh six, as we understand. Going on to the site plan portion of the application.
That's your next report?
Yes, SP twenty-two seventy-six, this is our letter dated April second, two thousand and thirteen. And this is potential property rule of the final subdivision, one point three twenty-five. And submission waivers, there is one from the D I S, and we support that, but they have received documentation, according to their cap rec, cap rec application, the cap permit, and the conservation restrictions have preserved specific, they'll be a portion of the remaining buffers, and we will all see that there's corporate developing camps, for that reason, we support this.
Let me ask for motion, I'll ask for motion on the.
Motion, Rennett?
Yeah, yes, the motion, the motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the waiver granted for the, yes.
Right now, under zoning, our zoning comment number two, we indicate that barriers are required for all street loading and unloading, and the U D O required is twelve feet by thirty-five in length, ten feet for clearance, the bank is small retail building on lot one point oh five, had no loading spaces, and the loading and unloading, so we need lot one point oh six, are proposed to be thirty feet long, which is likely shorter than the thirty-five that we need overpart, I'm sure we have testimony on that. We want clarification as to the exact proposed coverage, based upon that, we will determine whether barriers are required themselves, and what happens to act on that. Our comment number four.
Can you just kind of, to a practical, what, I mean, what's the practical interpretation? What's your?
Well, you're going here, passing, I would suspect that they're going to get testimony that the retail building does not require loading and unloading, which is why it's not shown in practice, that's what I would expect.
Oh, but I'll go back to the thirty-five percent.
Well, the thirty-five, thirty, thirty-five is the U D O requirement, specifies in the standards what the dimensions are, they've obviously shown selflessly less, I assume to a bunch of your testimony, that the thirty-foot long loading area needs their, their operation required.
In order to have any size truck, you need a thirty-five, right there.
Here, that's what the U D O says, that's not current, you're showing thirty.
Your opinion is cut any truck, cut any truck fit in a thirty-five?
I voted.
A tractor trailer?
Any walk, a tractor trailer would not, a delivery truck would not.
Could it have said thirty-five?
Small delivery truck, box truck, box type truck.
And big truck, any of the thirty-five.
Tractor trailer would not, thirty-four.
No, it wouldn't matter what kind of truck, it, it wouldn't matter if it's thirty or thirty-five, the same truck that fit in a thirty would fit in a thirty-five.
Correct, I'm not going to speak for, for the applicant's fair project, it's not because when someone says, I don't need a loading space, and here's why, and I'm not showing one, they're not making sense to the board as to why they need it, if you disagree, say, you know, right after you heard that, I don't believe this subdivision has loading spaces, then they would have to look back and give you loadings, they're going to have to convince you on this application, as we understand it, that one of the uses does not require loading spaces at all, and one of the spaces requires loading spaces, thirty forty, so one of the places versus. Everyone have to make that.
I understand, the only question that I have, what happens, the use right now doesn't require, I mean, five days down the line, somebody else goes in here, I think the U D O requires, that's why the U D O requires that we have a loading dock.
That's a fair question, and I would recommend, and I would wish I would pick me if I'm wrong, but if you were in that favorable, simply contingent upon any change of use, come back to the board with permission now to reevaluate the magazine site.
We could take that as a condition of the resolution, I don't believe this town generally operates, that way most towns require board review for any change of use, that isn't the exact same use, I don't believe that it does. So the thing is, what would trigger it, I mean, if somebody comes into town hall, someone's going to think to look at the resolution and find paragraph number thirty-four that says, you know, check to see if you need a loading dock, but we could certainly put in the resolution.
They're asking for the board members.
Yeah, we could put in the resolution, cross our fingers and hope it works, by the same token, you know, this applicant's making a big investment, that's what they want to do, and they might be there for a number of years, and why make them put in a loading dock that's not going to get used, that's pretty wasteful too.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, that type of thing I think is self-regulating, if you have a warehouse type use that goes in there that needs a loading dock, this scale, they're going to, don't put one in, the tenant will, or the landlord will.
Okay, Terry, you hold my number five.
Okay, I'm actually on comment four.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, we indicated on the letter, we had talked about the front door part, setback requirements, it's our understanding that if lot one point oh six is going to be longer than this, and therefore, proposed twenty, 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 setback, exactly, right? So therefore, that's not a value addition. Comment four, and finally, our, our, the loading comment five, are we dealing with device plan, indicate that barriers are required for providing help facilities along one point oh five, and we cite the ordinance two thousand and fifteen, that's six, and we five percent of the gross area and property that we're dealing with, uses shall be reserved for company mandates, such as sidewalk seating, water features, monitoring classes, and along the landscape areas, shall be considered, if accompanied by public mandates, or if ready to use, are not considered as part of the maintenance, that is the remainder as we understand.
And you have any design waivers on this?
Uh, I'm sorry, design waivers, we had a design waiver under driveway, that's rated with, or with particular access, as indicated in our letter, the applicant sent the area case, a slightly designed with four lane entries, and then the driveway with two called for one direction, approval of the waiver will allow for better traffic flow through the front side, per the engine response letter, the main access is aligned with what calls state driveway, and says stadium is in operation mostly at night, weekends, is the applicant position that the traffic will be all set for those use, and we may ask for a traffic testimony if you're, you'll actually, and then finally, under landscape buffers, the applicant's requesting a waiver to reduce. And then finally, under landscape buffers, the applicant's requesting waiver to reduce the nasty bump in width from 25 feet to 20 feet on the south side of the 1.06.
Thank you, Terry. Mr. Doyle.
Mr. Chairman, members, John Doyle, on behalf of the applicant. This application is, as was mentioned by both Terry and Ally, two parts. One is fundamental, that is subdivision, subdivision is to create three lots and leave the fourth lot, which is a large linear lot for future development. The two lots that are to be developed, one is going to have a relatively small, I know there's been some issues on past applications in the area, but the much more significant development, I want to put that aside and be clear about what this is. One lot that will have three structures, retail building with 23,000 square feet, relatively small, a chase bank of 3,500 square feet, a pad site of 3,300 square feet. That's on lot 1.05, and on lot 1.06 is 20,000 square foot office building. As we go through the waiver request, which are nominal, I think, and the variance is 30 versus 35 here, setback on one side. I don't want to lose sight of the vision that you see in front of you that is meant for this area of radials, jobs, new structures, and something for the future that will last into the future.
So such a big property couldn't get, get the sounds of any design waivers? Property's so big.
The, the design waivers, and, and I appreciate the question because it suggests that design waivers are all uniformly verbot. But there, there's an opportunity to do this, and we will, we hope, in your eyes, prove what we need to prove. I understand when you say 30, 35 feet, that, 50 isn't that much. When you look at other areas within the park that have been developed with some of those design waivers granted, not only for consistency and uniformity, but then it creates a certain commonality about it that makes it work. So we might have this discussion at the end of it, but let us at least present the reasons. Thank you. We're going to have Mr. Flannery testify some of the comments, and he can address the traffic comments, but we will have Scott Kennel, where you feel is disappropriate by specifics. We also have our architect, and that is why you'll see the plans. I'm going to refer so that the record is clear. The overall site plan, excuse me, subdivision plan is A1. Concept site plan is A2. The retail buildings, illustrious red ring A3, and the office building is A4. So for.
Mr. Flannery, just for testimony looking before the board, be the truth, the whole truth, and not but the truth.
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional and the venerable professional planner. Now, Ally had indicated.
Before your story, Mr. Doyle, please either qualify your witness or get the chairman to recognize him.
Mr. Flannery.
You don't have to go through the whole rigmarole. Do a record of the expert in planning and engineering. Thank you, I just want that to record.
Ally had indicated initially, the minor subdivision application is pretty simple. And on A1, I can point out for the board, and I think if we get that part of it done initially, everybody's going to know where it's at, and will know what we're talking about rather than getting confused on some of the details. Currently, it's an 86 acre parcel outlined in orange, which is owned by the town. It's immediately west of the Blue Forest State, and it goes all the way between Cedar Ridge and Pine. While we're proposing Pine as part of the minor subdivision, is chop it up into four lots, two which will remain in the ownership of the township. The other two will be developed, as Mr. Doyle has indicated, in a retail center and an office center. Lot 1.02 would be the remaining 69 acre parcel that the town's going to own, and, and there'll be future development of that in accordance with the ordinance. 1.04 is a 6.05 acre parcel that's going to remain in the ownership of the township. 1.05 is 3.8 acres, and that's this site that's going to have the retail development, as Mr. Doyle indicated, the L shaped retail building, the bank, and the pad site. And then 1.06, which is 7 acres, would have the office building. We're, we're asking for no relief on that. This is a minor subdivision by right. There are design waivers, as Terry indicated, with respect to curving and the sidewalk and the street trees, and as he indicated in his report, we're going to provide all of them in front of our properties. There are, there is, for the most part, all of that existing around. Obviously, there's no street tree in front of the wooden portion of the site, and we're not proposing to put them in. The town is going to sell that property in the future, somebody's going to come in and put them in. But all of the things that, in Terry's report, he recommends we're going to do, we agree to do that.
On your two properties, you put in curves?
On our two properties, it's going to be full curved sidewalk and everything, everything 100%.
Mr. Flannery, just to clarify on the subdivision review, Terry indicates that he was supporting waivers for curb and sidewalk along all of Pine and Avenue of America. I believe Avenue of America has curb. Provided you provide curb and sidewalk along Cedar Ridge. Are you providing any on the site plan for the portion of Avenue of State?
My reading of what Terry indicated is that on Cedar Ridge, we're going to provide it in front of lot 1.05. And obviously, there's already existing curb, and there's some asphalt sidewalk in front of our properties that will be replaced with concrete sidewalks.
Replacing with concrete sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah, everything exactly as Terry asked for.
Everything in front of your properties?
Yeah. So that's, that's it for the minor site plan. I think it's a no brainer, I can imagine why we would even talk about that further. You know, if the board has any questions on it, I'd be happy to answer them.
One second. Mr. Jackson, do we have to open up the public the subdivision? Should we vote on it now? No, no, no. Vote later?
Yes.
Unless the legal.
My angle is looking in my ear saying, vote on it.
I think usually the board hears all the testimony, especially after several votes.
Okay. I'm kidding, Mr. Vote, and I heard Mr. Reddick say put it in. There's an advantage to doing it at the end, you have the whole case before you.
Unless the legal, you have to do it right now.
It doesn't matter. And Mr. Doyle, you have any?
No, I, I think, I don't feel any sense of, I don't think this is subdivision, though. I think it would be appropriate to vote now for one here, again.
Well, the reason why I would like to wait is because you may want to move the lot on, take it by a little more, in case there's any variances. That's better than we.
I, I can't speak to the contractual relationship between the owner and the township. But I would assume that at this point, these specific boundaries, given the mountain square footage or acres that there is, are not written in stone, they certainly are rather.
I'd still rather hear what kind of.
Well, let's continue.
And, and we're happy to present that, and I think when you hear the testimony, you're hearing we're asking for relief, and, and I can see the look on your face, it's like, why are you asking for relief? I'm going to tell you that right on, and it's on page two of Terry's report.
Which report? Which report?
The site plan. The subdivision report we're done with. I, I don't see that the board would have any questions on that. We're doing what the ordinance says, we're asking what, we're doing what Terry asked.
That's dated April 2nd, right? Is this property where the mall was?
No, the mall, the mall was along Pine Street. This is on Cedar Ridge Avenue, across from the Seasons, and next to the Blue Forest State. So it's not where the mall. I know that was the information that was out there. It's the same application, different applicant, totally different application.
Stop reading the blogs.
Well, I want to make sure everybody knows, because if there's people here thinking this applicant is in, trying to pull one over on the board, or the public, or anybody else, they're reading, reading blogs of people who either don't know what they're talking about, or intentionally providing false information.
There's not one piece that's the same.
Right, there's not one piece that's the same, it's not the same type of a project, it's completely different. It's a small retail with an office building, totally different than what was proposed.
Thank you.
Where was the. The jury to the board, more or less.
So 1.02 was the mall. Do we try to get one?
So this property is the same property as the mall. They've got 86 acre lot, in the same property that the mall was on. But the, the proposed development on this application is in a different location on that 86 acre property than the mall was on. The mall was on the property that's adjoining Pine Street on the southerly end of the 86 acre property. This is on the northerly end of the 86 acre.
Okay, this can be.
So on, on page two of Terry's, Terry's April 2nd report, the very last sentence, it indicates a total of 606 off-street parking spaces are provided between the two sites. 450 are required. So that's why we're asking for some relief, because we're asking for a little bit of relief that makes sense in order to provide an additional 150 parking spaces. This could have been a completely by right application following all rules, and we would have, we would have had 78 parking spaces left, and everybody driving down the road wouldn't have seen anything different other than available parking spaces. And we know in Lakewood, available parking spaces is important. This is a site that we don't want people having to try to go somewhere else to park and run across one of these roads, and not roads to run across. So we're substantially exceeding the parking requirement, and we're asking for some relief that's consistent with what's in the area, and it makes sense. So I'll, I'll go through the zoning requests that we have, starting with a variance required for off-street loading and unloading. And, and it would be my opinion that, that reading the ordinance on that, we're really not asking for a variance with respect to loading and unloading. The, the retail site, we have two large 100 foot long loading areas in Pine the building, which comply. If you read the report, it's saying we don't have a loading area for the bank, and I haven't seen any banks in Lakewood or any of the towns that have a 35 foot loading area.
What is the bring truck on?
The bring truck spits in the.
Wait, so this 30, 35 discussion is regarding the chase building, it's not regarding the major building?
It's regarding the chase building, the pad site, and the proposed office building. The proposed office building, we have site parking, parking spaces for the FedEx truck that are 12 foot by 30 foot. We can make them 12 foot by 35 foot, and, and we're agreeing to do that right now, so that that's one less thing that we're asking for. FedEx truck, trucks fit in 12 by 30, but if, if one less thing we can cross off the list that we don't need, we'll make them 5 feet deeper. And we'll have 35 feet deep loading space for the office building, and I don't think you see any of them around.
What's the pad side?
So we come back and be clear, on the retail, we have an E D O ordinance. On the bank and the pad site, we don't have it, but it's a little point to have in that.
Correct.
And on the proposed office building, we will leave the 35.
That is true.
So.
Mr. Clannery. What's the pad side? The proposed mall, 12 foot? For me to go?
When I see you the pad side, I'm talking about, this is the chase bank, you can tell it from your plan, it has a drive-in. The proposed retail is the pad site, as of yet, it would be a right, so it's not going to, that's relatively my side.
How, how big is it?
3,000 square, 3,300 square feet.
So you're talking about a small store?
Yes.
Yes.
So you don't need a big loading dock on there?
And, and, and reading the ordinance, section 18903L, four, under off-street loading, for the loading, it says, "Loading spaces shall be provided in sufficient number and sufficient size so that no loading or unloading operations infringe upon street sidewalk or public property." And it's my testimony that this complies with that. It further has a chart that goes by the size of the facility, and for 10,000 to 99,000 square feet, you need one loading dock. We provided two proper loading docks for this site that, that in, in my testimony complies with the ordinance. I, I don't like to disagree with Terry because it's not a good practice, so I'm asking for the relief that he indicates, but it's my professional opinion that it's not needed. With respect to the proposed office building, we had done 12 by 30, which we focused on FedEx truck. We now amend the application to be 12 by 35, so on that side clearly, the supply we bought, again, you need one for less than 99,000 square feet. We have two of them over there, so we can have the FedEx and UPS truck guy there at the same time.
How much total parking on both lots?
606 parking spaces.
And, and then?
And required is 450.
100 and 200.
We usually flip that when we come to Lakewood, then we, we provide 400, 450 or 600 is required, and then you have some parking problems.
So I don't know if the board is going to change.
The board has, yeah, the board has changed, that doesn't happen anymore, and we, we've taken it a step further, and we're providing more parking because the applicant wants to be able to rent these buildings, and he doesn't want people not having room to park.
Are these medical offices? Or office buildings?
I don't know that any of this office space is rented yet, and whether it's medical or non-medical.
My, my question to you is, even if we make it all medical, you still have sufficient amount of parking? Is that correct?
Well, the parking in this zone is different than the parking requirement in, in the rest of, the rest of town, they have the general office at 1 for 300. This is, this is a, it's separate standard in this Cedar Ridge development, so it says office 1 for 250.
And it doesn't make no difference if it's medical or.
Right, right, and we've exceeded the 1 for 250, so that we're probably closer to a 1 for 150 for the office building. And, and the other thing is, there are cross accidents between these, so in, inasmuch as the office and the retail have different parking demand times, there's the availability to compensate for the parking. And we have a traffic expert, Scott Kell, and I want to leave him some stuff to say when he gets up. He came all the way for this meeting, so.
He has stuff to say, trust him.
And he's going to say level of service C, just to be a spoiler, but. So that, that's the first variance that's indicated. A, I can read the report, indicates that a review of the plan indicates there might be an impervious coverage variance that's not needed. We have measured it. Obviously, on the large building site, we're well under 80% impervious coverage. On the retail site, we are under 80% impervious coverage, as indicated on the plan. It's only 1 or 2% under, but it's on the, it's just the right side, we have it beyond. And I have looked at those calculations, and, and we will, as part of the resolution compliance, give the exact number rather than less than 80%, but it is less than 80%. The.
Front yard parking setback.
The front, front yard parking setback, 20 feet is allowed for the retail. And what happened is, the retail was added to the ordinance, and they originally did this zone, and it didn't allow the retail, it only allowed offices. At that point, they thought, well, 50 feet is, 50 feet is nice. When they came with the retail, they said 50 feet is wasting space, we'll make it 20. So we have 20 for the retail, and we don't need any relief from that. We're asking for 20 for the office building, and how we're compensating for that is by adding parking. There's 35 parking spaces across the front, and we lose a cut on the side, so we can give you 50, we push it back, and we lose close to 40 parking spaces. It doesn't make any sense. This is consistent with other buildings in this area. If this was fronting on New Hampshire Avenue, I wouldn't be proposing that, because the building that was done on New Hampshire Avenue, it's 50 feet. And when you look at the other side of New Hampshire Avenue, there's setback further. There's a building across the street, and Ally, I don't know if I saw on Google Earth, it, it's probably built before Google Earth picture, but theirs is relatively the same, they didn't give 50 feet either, they gave something less than 50. And I did the testimony for that, and said, we're going to give you more parking, give us less than 50, and. less than 50 and, and then was granted across the street, so this would be consistent.
So Brian, just, just have your own second away. Is it possible theoretically to not require any setback?
The parking setback we could eliminate, we lose 38 parking spaces.
That's all you're gonna lose?
Still comply, still comply and, and we'll have 50 foot setback rather than 20.
I think it does apply before, that technically the response, because you, you can get away with a variance and other design waiver.
Yes, that is correct. That is correct. We, we would have no, no variances or design waivers if we eliminated.
In your testimony, you asked for the waiver because you want to give more parking?
We'd rather, we'd rather have 70 extra parking spaces than, and it, it would be different if it was a, a variance that was gonna have some detriment on the public or if the variance that's really meant anything. There's no detriment here. So it's a C2 variance where the benefits have, have that way, the detriment, the benefits are enormous and the detriments are not.
The, the question against two things. One is, whose crystal ball is clearer in terms of markets in terms of parking is probably clear than the.
And I, I agree, I agree. I'd rather have a parking. I'd say we all do, that's, that's my answer to put on the record.
And the second thing is in terms of consistency, and I think the screen will show that across the street, it is less than 100. There's an exhibit, I think you shared it.
Yeah, unfortunately, the lighting, unfortunately, the lighting for this is just terrible. You haven't, you know, thought of this yet?
But there are plenty seats, anybody who's standing, wants to sit down. Plenty of seats.
I suppose we've thought about this, I'm just not sure that.
Yes, yes. Yeah, it's, it's difficult to create a record and have exhibits and make it the board's responsibility to put it up and, and we just can't do that, so.
I have a lot of my stuff here before I.
We'll try to accommodate that here, but in the future, that introduces too much of a burden on the secretary.
Showing you what we'll have parked at, say, five, we're disappointed that with respect to the.
That, that's the property across the street. And you can see that their setback, it looks like about 30 feet, but that's probably because the property line is there.
What, what's there now?
The office building.
That's office building.
So as far as better future planning is consistent with our.
The last variance item that's indicated, number five, is providing public amenities. And the provided public amenities indicates amenities such as seating areas, bicycle facilities, instead of lawn and landscape areas, they'll be considered public amenities, amenities accompanied by other public amenities. And the intent is that we would have benches and bike racks along the underscaded area so that if anybody needs walking or biking in that area, place will sit. That complies with that ordinance. And you can see the town green, that rack within the front there, that represents 12% of the site. So we're required to provide 5% lawn and grass areas with benches and, and seating and, and bike racks. If we haven't provided enough benches and seating and bike racks, we'll put more benches and seating and bike racks in here that the board and your professionals are happy with so that we, we more than comply, more than double comply with these requirements of the, of the ordinance. So it's, it's, it's my testimony and I clear testimony that relief is not needed in matter.
Anything else you require?
Then we get to design waivers and the design waiver we're asking for is a driveway that exceeds 35 feet. This is an old provision in the ordinance that I tried every chance I got to get them to change it because it's ridiculous, it makes sense for a, a small store to have 35 foot benches, but a facility like this, these benches like this, this would be appropriate. So you have left turn lanes, if people move in and out and everything works good.
A wire delay.
And the traffic, the traffic engineer will testify on that and will testify, so we, we need a design waiver for that. It would be crazy to make it smaller than that, so.
I don't know what works.
Tell it wouldn't work.
The 600 cars.
This, this, this is what's appropriate, the, the ordinance, that old provision in the ordinance, it didn't take into account like that and, and that's why we're asking for that waiver relief. And then the last design waiver that we're asking is on the south side of the building, we provided a 20-foot buffer park, we put it in the front, and in the back, we have more than 20 feet. 25 feet is required and that's a situation again, we would eliminate that, that parking aisle, the way that actually we would put it, we eliminate these parking spaces and we not lost another 20 parking spaces, we comply with that extra 50 feet. If the property that's extra, that's gonna be developed similar, 20 feet is more than adequate buffer and it's my testimony that it certainly makes sense to grant a design waiver that provides additional parking in lieu of doing something that doesn't have any.
Is there gonna be buffering after those parking spots? Parking could make that.
Well, the next property that comes in, it, it's gonna have their requirement of providing a 25-foot buffer and somebody's gonna stand up here like I am and say, you know, our parking aisle works better if, if we have 20 or 22 and we're gonna give you extra parking spaces. If they come in and say, we wanna do 20 and we're just matching the parking requirements, then I imagine the board would look at them like they're crazy and tell them, go back and try again. If they come in and say, if we eliminate, eliminate 5 feet, you get an extra 40 parking spaces over, well over the amount that's required by the ordinance, I would imagine that the board would look on that favorably and, and we have 40 feet in between the two parking.
Are there any trees after, after the parking? Before that stuff, will, will there be trees?
Oh, yes, yes, the landscaping, the 20-foot is landscaping.
Okay. Anything else in the report?
Um.
This picture over here doesn't show sidewalks, I just wanna make sure that.
I assume that's an error in the.
The, the, the engineering plan is still sidewalk. Engineer's a little more detail oriented and they got the sidewalk, this, this looks real nice, but there will be sidewalks.
I also, I think the sidewalk plan is way earlier to, I had to see after we started putting those boards.
Now, this one, because it's submitted as a new exhibit, I just wanted to.
Looking at, at Terry's report, he, he talks again about the loading zones for the bank that we haven't provided one because we don't need it. He talks about trash and it will be private contractors that are gonna pick them up and dumpsters, although more dumpsters have been added since the conceptual plan.
Where, where is the trash? You have, each building has its own?
Each building has its own. There's two in the back of this building, there's dumpsters, if you look on your plan over there and then, and then there's another dumpster near the, the bank building.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Look at the dumpsters, I'm looking at the group, not the four buildings. You show two by the four-story building.
Yes.
And you show four by the retail building. Why, no, only two is a bigger building.
Because the office building doesn't typically have the same waste generation and, and it's gonna be private pickup, so they're gonna have to pick it up as often as it needs. So if they get some office uses in there that generate the, the amount of waste that some of the retail users do, they'll have to pick it up every day. The, you know, the applicant looked at this with his design professional and, and looked at what's typically done and felt this was the appropriate amount. Item, item seven in the report is saying we should add another piece of sidewalk, which we will do, we agree to.
Item nine, yes, the height, they've got height and bearings, there's no height, no personal buildings.
No, there's no height. Yes, item nine actually said the buildings will be well below the level. And, and this project is being built in accordance with CAPRA. There's comments in there about the landscaping and we will do whatever the board feels is required on landscaping. There was some comment about the Shade Tree Commission, comments which we haven't seen to the extent that the ordinance requires what the Shade Tree Commission requires or the board requires of it, we would provide it, but we, we don't wanna give you a blank check on what the Shade Tree Commission says. I've seen some of their requests and I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't write a check if it was me.
Are there any basements on all these buildings? Rentable basements, not for residential?
Yeah.
And it's only for the stores above it?
Yeah.
It's not rented separately?
No, no, no basement apartments, so we don't need any sprinkles.
Oh, yeah, it's great, yes, that's good. Okay, any questions for any board members?
I, I could go through.
Do you agree with, with Terry's report, everything else of them?
Yeah, I, I could go through the criteria with the, with respect to the need requested.
Can we press here from the public?
Well, I, I don't know if John felt we wanted to dot the i's across the p's. As far as the relief, the master plan, division statement says encourage growth development in appropriate locations, consistent with established land uses and, and we certainly comply with that. The municipal land use law, NJAC 4552, the act, says encourage municipal to guide the appropriate use for development of all lands in the state, no matter which will slow public health, safety, morals and general welfare. And it's my testimony that others, any of the relief that we need would fall into a C2 variance, we need to show relates to a specific piece of property. I, I think this certainly falls in that category. The purpose of the municipal land use law would be advanced, which I, I just gave you. The variance can be granted without any substantial detriment to public good. The variance will not impair the intended purpose of the master plan and as indicated before, the benefits of the relief we're asking outweigh any detriment because my testimony is there is no detriment.
This basis, you need a, a, a decision?
Yes, it is.
I think you'd do something like what we proposed.
Yes.
Can I just, forgive me, I've been multitasking over here, I just wanted to checklist a couple things off. The traffic study is provided and transmitted to the planning board, it's done, right?
We're gonna have testimony.
The traffic engineers go.
We have a traffic study, only as central and operational. We've requested that the, the regular engineer give you a testimony.
And he'll do that.
Including updated counts as to the current issue.
That was the next thing I've been, important calculation to be clarified. Curb and stormwater to be added to the long development front as the procedure has been done?
No, they're requesting way, partial waivers. Oh, I'm sorry, they had Cedar Bridge, I've been the other.
Right. And then we'll, we'll comment on the buffer comment forum, page four, is that done?
Yeah. We had a comment, our, our comment number 17, since we're based upon dialogue with the outreach society. It's our understanding that we're asking for architects to be retainers or to give the finality and that's something that, that you, you agree?
Yes, we, we agree to provide a landscaping plan satisfactory to your office.
By?
By, by a licensed landscape architect.
Okay. It's okay. I think we should hear from the traffic engineer.
Fine.
Is he here?
Traffic expert. Panel, please raise your right hand, do your firm testimony before this board. We'll be retreating, I hope there's nothing but.
I do. As many times as you've been interviewed before and you're actually using the record, I put it out for everybody. Yes, Scott Kennel with McDonough Ray Associates, 1431 Lakewood Road, Manus Run.
Okay, so if you just put it out, you just show us the circulation of traffic. The circulation of traffic.
Well, again, Brian has testified as far as the onsite circulation, it deals with the retail and the office building. As far as access to the site, there'll be a right in. The access to Cedar Ridge, you know, it's really demonstrated, there'll be a right in, right out, no left turns, Cedar Ridge Avenue. You'll have, if you turn on the Avenue of the States, there'll be a right in, right out. And adjacent to the pad site, you see the pad site of the bank. As you move further south, the main access, it'll turn both projects directly opposite Blue Claw's access.
Then there'll be a left turn too?
Full movement at that location.
And is there a light over there?
There's no light and I'll discuss levels of service analysis that I.
How can you make the left without a light over there?
I was out there again an hour and a half today, you can make lots out of there. I mean, the Blue Claw's operation, Blue Claw's operation occur after our peak hours, I mean, game. Game times are generally at night at 6:35 or 7 o'clock. And that's, so again, the traffic, so the baseball stadium occurs after the peak hour traffic generation from the retail and office building. And then we have one, just one more, one more driveway serving the site as we proceed. The southerly end, the south end of the office building, there'll be a right in, right out at that location, there's four driveways serving.
The two sites.
The two sites.
And, and is there any terminal road between the two properties?
Yes, there is. I mean, the one other benefit, and I'll go back to the first driveway, Cedar Ridge Avenue, you make a right turn into the site, you proceed in southern direction behind the retail building, directing to the office, so it's interconnection, multiple interconnection points between the two sites, which again, lessen traffic on the public roadways, provide the most direct access to specific users, to the specific road that they wanna access.
Just by way of fact, you did submit a traffic report back in February.
That's correct.
But that was before the light was put in.
That's correct.
And the light was put in, hey, so the traffic was dead.
That's correct.
Mr. Board, just one second, please. Where, where was the light put in, if you can show for the record?
The light would be on the, so right side, be at this location.
Corner Avenue of the States and Cedar Ridge?
Opposite of the firehouse, yes.
Avenue, that's a functional light, but.
That's a functional light, it was turned on second, third week in March. Typically, it's best to do traffic counts a certain period after that's been installed or traffic kinda normalizes, people get familiar with it. And then when it was turned on, it was very close to Passover. I had done some counts right before Passover and I also did additional counts last night after Passover to have a good representation of baseline traffic counts. And I will do a full-blown traffic study that has to go to the county and I, we can provide it to the, to the board's engineer, but because of the timing, when the light was turned on and we passed over the holidays, just didn't have the opportunity to do the full-blown traffic study submitted. I did do the analysis and I can provide those details.
On your main entrance?
Yes.
What, what would you say, which level would, would it operate?
Well, and again, what's important to recognize also is the access opposite Blue Claw's access is approximately 500 feet south of Cedar Ridge Avenue. So there's 500 feet from Cedar Ridge Avenue to that main access and based on our analysis, the average queue of sacking of vehicles from Cedar Ridge Avenue would be half, about midpoint. And that analysis is, takes into consideration the 2028 design year where traffic counts recently collected or expanded with a 10% growth rate. It also included traffic from 10 other known developments in the area. Six of them are within the Cedar Ridge Corporate Park and then other developments in the area, for example, the retail use on America Avenue, which is gonna open up shortly, traffic from that site was included. And when I consider all that traffic, the average queue would be about the midpoint of, between Cedar Ridge Avenue and the main access. So there would be no, traffic would not queue up past the site driveway. But getting back to your initial comment, the site driveway projected operate a level service C with a net 95th percentile queue or stacking for traffic exiting here being less than two vehicles. And again, a lot of that is attributed to the random plating of traffic on Avenue of the States as well as the traffic signal that platoons traffic in the southbound direction. So the combination of all those, that would operate a level service C.
But technically, the cars go out on Cedar Ridge, make a right out and get to the light.
They can do that and my analysis considered specifically people from the retail, a great proportion do that, and even some of the office users who may be parked in the west portion, they consider that if they have destinations to the east.
I think it's easier to make a right and then hit, and go to the light than make a left turn on Avenue of the States.
Again, it's a minute driver's preference, but again, our analysis, in which will be completed within a couple of weeks, will show that this worked at level service C. will show that this works at level service C with all the conditions I mentioned earlier.
And the other driveways, everything will.
Will be a level service C. The intersection.
Nothing more than a level C.
Correct, overall level service C from analyzing the Cedar Bridge Avenue access. And again, here, they have the benefit of the traffic by the Shenandoah, which continues traffic in these found directions. So that helps the operational characteristics here. And do you install a traffic signal, that intersection will be overall level service C, given without the development, when I consider the traffic growth and all the other developments in the area that have been approved and are appropriate for the area.
Question, Jerry.
Yes.
Can we add to on the record what colors?
Well, level service C, we rate an intersection level service A to F. A is, in this area, it's the two o'clock in the morning.
Non-existent.
Well, two o'clock in the morning. And the general design standards, the design of intersectional level service C or D is accepted in the industry. And what we're providing here is a level service C, which means that the average vehicle delay would be approximately 25 seconds per vehicle. When you consider all the movements and all the vehicles utilizing the intersection.
Right, great.
At the intersection itself, correct.
If you show us the two sides, is there a walkway for pedestrians to walk from the two sides? What's in between the two sides?
Are you saying between the retail and office? I don't see one, and we ask, is something we can provide, like a sidewalk connection?
I think so, especially if you're saying your overflow traffic is going to go from one place to the next. What, where are you?
We can provide, how it suggests, if you have the first internal intersection, it's a little bit of turn movements here, left and right, so for here, if you do it in mind with two buildings, we can provide that.
If we have the overflow traffic going from one to the next, I think we need a walkway for the people to walk.
That's a good suggestion.
Any other questions to the traffic engineer?
I have a question.
Did he come through the apartment as well, towards the office building? Correct, we would, I mean, we provided a crosswalk to the area, we would take two phases. If that's something you think is desirable, we can do that.
I think it's a safety issue, people walking in and back and forth.
That's not a problem, you can accomplish.
The southern driveway, and you mentioned with lane layout, none of the plans show that.
Well, again, on this area, I'm trying to see where it's the right in, it's six o'clock. We can add a specific signage to enforce that, but the intent is that we're. Three of the four driveways will be right in, right out. Including this one, and this, we have a median that's directly opposite the northbound driveway, so that's self-regulated. And there's a median also at the other location, but again, we can sign that to encourage and enforce that. To be clear, this is the fourth lane, and here's going to have a median, and that's going to have openings. So create the intersection. Well, there's an opening where Blue Claw's driveway is, but there's also an opening in the vicinity of the southerly driveway, serving the building on the east side of Avenue of the States. That's just being, please.
What time generally, what time generally does our Blue Claw's been, are the tenants fracturing it?
Well, the game times are six thirty-five or seven from their schedule.
How many day games are?
Very big, from what I can see, very big.
I just checked yesterday, they're like four o'clock, seven o'clock, most of the weekend.
The four o'clock, our weekend starts, correct.
Okay.
There's five day games, four of them are at 11:05 on a weekday, and one's at 1:05.
11:05 and 1:05 all three days?
Yeah.
And that's usually during the summer when schools aren't in session, so you have less traffic.
So if let's say most of the games are at night.
Correct.
What would be the backup to, I just wonder if there is a way possibly to limit the left turns during, after a certain hour at night? Let's say the left turn out from that main entrance, to limit it maybe after six o'clock?
I would see how to do that as a site management issue, how would that ever be enforced? I note that the, the Blue Claws almost always have police officers out there managing the entrance and exit.
Mr. Jackson, on Route nine of Madison Avenue, there are signs right now, like before seven, up to seven o'clock. You can't make a left turn.
You're right, Mr. Rant, I forgot about the signs that regulate that.
Well, you can only make, after seven you can make a left, before that you can't.
You know, I think the planning board can only do that in and out of the site, you couldn't put it out on the road. What you're talking about, those signs typically are.
On this side, in and out of the site, yeah.
In the site.
In this site.
Yeah, in the site you could do that.
I was, my opinion, based on my experience out here, and I've been to a number of Blue Claw games, it's a ramp up, and again, you got to remember, this isn't the only access off Avenue of the States, the only access off Boulevard of America. And it's a gradual influx of patrons. And again, it generally occurs after 5:30, and more so between 6:00 and 6:30. I mean, office, office users generally, employees are less by 5:00. I mean, there's still some there at 5:30, but it's much less than you'd like. So they're compatible, they're compatible, in my opinion.
Retail, you go to 11:00.
You can go to 11:00. Again, this is a, I'll say, a smaller, modest-sized retail.
22,000 square feet?
And again, and again, once the people arrive at the stadium, you don't have a constant traffic entering. And typically with baseball games, you generally don't have people leave all at once. I mean, there are people that stay for six innings, some for seven innings, and depending how the game goes, they exit on a kind of a more gradual basis.
I just know that when there is a game there, the traffic's backed up on Cedar Bridge.
Well, they were backed up because they didn't have the traffic light. When the game began, prior to, four weeks ago, yeah, you didn't have a traffic signal there. You had a half police, just a half police out on Shametown Avenue. I think everybody agrees that this traffic light should have been in 10, 12 years ago. And it's not to die without police in the middle of the intersection, and now the fact we have a traffic light, that's going to again regulate and control.
So do you think, when there's a game exiting, how, there's a compact car? All the way up, or?
I, generally, I'm gone by the sixth or seventh inning, usually my kids are ready to go, and, you know, they had enough. And whenever I left, it was not an issue. The longest time was the walk to the car. Once I get to the car, then, you know, you get out fairly simply.
And you feel, even when there's a game, it'll still run at a level C?
Yes, I mean, because again, they're not coincidental peak hours, they're peak activity. Now, when the, when the stadium or baseball games are loading up, it's much less traffic coming from the, definitely much less in the offices, and then a lesser amount from the retails.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board members?
What's the feasibility of putting a street out? Because you have 500 feet in order, 12 years ago.
I don't know if you may. It's very difficult to coordinate, and that, it's not desirable happening, they're not close together. Generally, the minimum distance is 800 feet, but even that takes a lot of synchronization. I mean, that's what you have now. I think Shenandoah is located about 800 feet to 900 feet. I know the county's still working on trying to synchronize those, because they're not fully synchronized. And again, that takes time after it's been up and running, and they'll go back out and modify it.
You have to put the light on the next time, Charles, to say under pressure.
Well, I think eventually this is a part of the, you may even see something on Boulevard of America, which I mean, down at the next major section.
As they develop further.
As they develop further, yes.
Okay, I will open the door.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So now our architect wants to identify or.
Anybody in the public who'd like to be heard on this application? Please come forward.
This is where I'm from, test on a busy first floor with super hope.
I affirm, I know usually you can't cross-examine the attorney, but I would like to ask a question. Is there any reason why there's no affidavit of ownership in both applications? Township owns the property.
Can you repeat that, I don't hear that.
Is there any reason why there's no affidavit of ownership filed on this application? That means this, the township owns the property. Comes an applicant, files for applications, who says that the township gave permission to do it? Usually you file affidavit of ownership, that's what it's called.
Well, that question is in the form of testimony, so what we.
I said that usually you don't cross-examine an attorney to ask such a question, so I'm not calling it cross-examining. I'm just saying, is.
I'm just trying to understand your question in order to get the answer. Your question suggests that there is no affidavit of ownership on file?
Yes.
There is, female does.
And that's what I'm, let's get to the bottom of that first.
I don't have the paper file with me, so all I have is my digital files, which just the client has access to, so I'm not going to find anything different than that.
Oh, that doesn't mean.
I know, but I'm looking for the document, that's all. I guess I don't have to scan it, there being paper files, I'm scared. I think they are standard part of the application that I checked for.
Mr. Doyle, do you file an affidavit of ownership?
I am entirely out of page, I was just looking to see who was, anybody filed, what change or demand or business.
I don't know, there's Morgan looking for her.
Please, say it on the record.
Let me just understand, is the.
I don't think there's any affidavit of ownership.
So I don't know that we require an affidavit of ownership, that's why the applicant.
Usually, that's what happened.
The applicant submitted documents, the LLC, and that's required, but I guess he looks for affidavit of ownership. He says, I own the property, I'm the tenant, and I'm for a certification, which I see, from my recollection, is in my files upstairs, I just don't appear to have a statement in it.
We'll connect up with that later. The purpose for that regulation is so that the public knows who the applicant is, when it's the municipality. I don't think we're concerned about that issue.
I'll give you my legal opinion on that, could I?
Well, this is your, you have any comment, any questions, you're trying to blend in.
My just understanding is that when the, let's say the township over here, anybody could come in, file an application, and then, on their property, the point is, the owner of the property, this is the township over here, and who is the, who usually signs off on it?
And they won't build the.
The mayor.
The mayor usually signs off on it, that's what happened when the Yeshiva came over here, with that big application with Cedar Bridge, they came, the township, that was the mayor then.
I assure you, I will put in a condition in the resolution that the municipality must properly.
Sign off on.
Sign off on this, for lack of a better term. Okay, yeah, that's.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Yep, and now I have a question for Brian. It's about parking, I don't know if this is Brian or the traffic engineer, but I think it's Brian. About parking, this is, this is a Blue Claw that a lot of developers do. They provide over access and more parking than needed. They ask for a waiver to get away with the parking. And they claim this, we'll give you more parking. What they do afterwards is, they use it for the next lot, to have like an easement, to get this parking over here, because they have over access of parking. What happened over here in the property on Route nine in Chesnut, they actually developed the basement. And they used, listen, we could develop now the basement, we have more parking. What they failed to say is that the reason why they were able to get the more parking is because we gave them away the buffer. So, this is a thing, he's not giving more parking, he wants to give more parking. He's giving more parking is because he's trying for to utilize the basement afterwards, use that parking, or to utilize it for the next neighbor to buy out from him that.
He testified on the oath that the basement will not be used only for the tenants upstairs, and not being rented out.
Yeah, but he could come later, with a late application, and use this parking in a buy right application.
Chairman, if you can, totally questioning that this application, based on the facts, without.
Okay, so the question is, Brian, that I have to use.
I understand, here's the question.
Are you, are you willing to, I don't know, that's a question. Yeah, did you get my point, yeah?
I got your point, thank you.
Now, as far as the traffic, that's what I'm.
Mr. Cannon.
Traffic.
Mr. Cannon, Scott Cannon.
We have over here, why aren't you connecting these two properties over here? Have access from this to this, it makes more sense to reconnect the properties inside like this, you don't have to go out from here and back to there, something you want to go into the next property.
Well, we don't know what's being developed there, and we don't have control. That may be something that's feasible as the next lot is developed, but at this point, who knows when that could take place, and we don't know how they're locked integrally.
So if you're the one that is providing this property on behalf of the township, so technically the township is the occupant. So my question is, did the township, whatever is above there, why don't you connect, the property seems to connect like this, we have nine, why are we putting a parking over here? Why don't we just have it connected, and when the next development comes in, then connect this up?
Question, answer, and answer, that's in the future, we can't decide it now.
Okay. You have another minute.
I have a question.
Okay.
Now about the sidewalks. Why don't you, just, somebody comes in and walks over here with a sidewalk? Why don't you disconnect everything from the building? I know it was discussed on this part over here, but people walk over here, wherever there's a sidewalk over here, you have. Let's say over here, I see the only place where you have a crosswalk.
Mr. Klein, could you show them, Kentsey?
Yes, I'll show them. The only place where we have marked crosswalks, very important, is in this section, in this section. It means that you have sidewalks over here. Somebody comes over here and walks, this is the only place where it's a sidewalk. There shouldn't be a sidewalk, so that is a problem, because the building is like over here, but it looks like it is or it isn't.
There is sidewalk there, it's a shadow, in fact, it is. So there's sidewalk facing.
Facing the front of the building.
The retail laws has sidewalks, yeah.
And if somebody comes in over here, somebody comes in over here to. So how is somebody supposed to get from this area, like he goes in over here, or over here? How is he supposed to get to this one without, with the sign?
Guys, have you ever seen a commercial area like this, that sidewalks were generally destroyed?
Mr. Doyle, Mr. Klein was asking a question, is that the question you want to ask?
Well, the question is no different from others about other retail type developments. There's the use of the circulation models, and typically people park to where, to the closest to the building that they're on the pavement. There's the need to go from one building to another, this is no different from any other commercial product that worked out where you had multiple buildings. It's mostly people are familiar, and they have to be cognizant of both the dimensions, they're cognizant of the vehicles, and the drivers, they're cognizant of the.
So, your experience is more that people come and drive to these, to these type of places. But you must understand, the new type of people moving in at the Lakewood, especially the ladies don't drive, including my wife, that's the reason why I know it's a problem, yes. There's other developments, shopping centers in Lakewood, that has this problem, that's the reason why I'm mentioning it. If you have these type of people moving in that has, they need to walk, you're not providing that they walk. What other developments in Lakewood are missing, I'm just mentioning it, and all I'm saying is, if you have over here a sidewalk, and we should be connecting the sidewalk to this place. You have the sidewalk over here, and have it connected, all of that should have sidewalks. My suggestion is not this, it should be all the ground to the roof. If somebody walks, then it should be a sidewalk.
Mr. Klein, you're blending your questions with.
I know, I'm not an attorney, so I just have my.
Just gave your legal opinion before.
I think Mr. Klein laid out his question.
I'm amazed.
Okay, so let him ask. What is your question?
Is that too long? My question, my response is the site property design is.
Mr. Klein, what is your point?
Okay, what's my point? My point is, you know.
You want internal signs?
What?
Internal signs?
It should be internal sidewalks, he claims is, that it's, in his professional opinion, it's appropriate. I know from experiences, it is a problem, I'm bringing it up. Now, if the applicant wants to save an extra few dollars and not put in sidewalks, when it's a safety issue, go ahead. But I see also the crosswalks, there's no marked crosswalks over here. And this is not acceptable, it comes up application, application, this should be pointed out by the engineer or the applicants. What is the cost to put in a few dollars? It's not even talking about thousands of dollars. It's a few extra dollars. Mark it, mark the crosswalks. You know, and I'm keeping up, bringing it up to the board, and the board is keeping up, ignoring it. There's no reason why applications should come in to the board. There shouldn't be marked sidewalks, marked crosswalks. And again, I'm asking again that this site, it makes no sense. The Yeshiva came, and this is my final thought. And he made a comment this in the blogs. I'm not responsible for every blog in Lakewood. But there was a mention in the blog that this is the same block and lot that the Yeshiva came in with the 1,200 signatures against the Yeshiva. Against Aaron Cutler came in and they were against this whole project. And what I did is they're selling off...
Not our application.
What?
This is not our application for you.
Just wanted to finish up. It won't make a difference. You get what you want anyways. So they're selling off the partial property. Now what we're losing out is when the Yeshiva came in with their application, we had interconnecting, the shopping center was interconnecting from one part to the another part. Now that they're selling it separately is, we're losing that interconnecting idea that was proposed to begin with. So it strongly asks that this should be opened up to the next project. And again, about the parking, if you could put in any type of, again, I feel bad for the applicant. Let him make some money. But I'm bringing out a point why when the Yeshiva came, nobody was concerned that it should make money. They got a project for $10. They don't make so much money. This applicant paid to Aaron Cutler. He paid $100. So he has to cut corners. So you have to understand that you have to give him some leeway more than before. Got my point?
Yes, I said that. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else in the public who'd like to be heard, please come forward. While he comes forward, Terry, is there any, what's your recommendation about internal sidewalks on the property?
I don't know if we're talking about an internal sidewalk. Mine's saying that you're on crosswalk.
He said both. He said both. I agree that it should be struck.
I would not interrupt the parking lot in the concrete. I would walk in and perhaps give it for that favor, but...
Striking the crosswalk.
... and warn people, professionals, and add additional strike areas to provide additional interconnections from the site and within the buildings. I think there was testimony to that effect earlier. You're going to mark these cases, but it would be a finite number and you have to...
I agree with that. I think it should be striked, crosswalks throughout the property. And then also what happens? With the crosswalks, you would agree to work out with Terry? Okay, thank you. Okay, please raise your right hand and state your name. You affirm.
You affirm that the testimony that you will give before this court will be the truth, the whole truth, and not a lie? Please state your name.
Please speak into the mic. I'm sorry.
Stanley Felsinger, F-E-L-S-I-N-G-E-R, 21 Hawk Way, Pine River Village. So I divided it into two parts because I thought there were two sections.
Want to take the mic a little higher? Would you like it a little higher? Is that better for you?
I come over here. Is that better?
Excuse me, can I have the band down?
No, you have that. Thank you, Baruch, I can stop that. So the first part is on the subdivision. We did not receive in Pine River Village, only the people who were 200 feet from the Pine Street end of the property. None received, nobody else received, and we received it the evening of Eric Pesach, and the meeting was today. So we didn't have too much time to really understand what was happening. We just didn't have the opportunity at all. So I have some questions. On the subdivision, there are going to be four lots. Is that correct?
Yes. And they're... Creating four lots, two of which are to be occupied with the building you described as shown on page one.
The lot that's going to be on Pine Street, how many entrances is that?
That should be the remainder parcel of 69 acres.
That's 69.
Klein, maybe just show them one.
Here's Klein. Receive. Six acres.
This is the 86. This is the...
This is...
Right, right. Which is the acre?
This is...
The orange, the orange piece?
The orange is 86 acres. Well, we're talking about the...
Okay, thank you. So everybody is cognizant of the dangers in Lakewood on the streets and the highways. I almost got hit this morning coming from the day of stock. Somebody went a turn without stopping at the stop sign, missed three by inches. He looked to his right, turned left. I was coming from the left. I jammed my brakes and just missed. There's a culture of dangerous aggressive driving. And I see that the board, I was here last year when the Yeshiva came in, and I see that the tone on the board is an understanding of that and a desire to see that that's rectified the best it can, both by preventing development where it shouldn't be and putting in lights and doing what can to stop it. I'm representing Pine, P-I-N-G, Pine River Village. How much traffic will come out of this development, make the right turn? You said it's a right? Traffic. General, yeah. And go to Pine and either make a right or a left? What additional amount of cars will be going that way?
What you'll have in the afternoon, there'll be anywhere from 20 to 30 vehicles. That'll be processed through the Pine Street and avenue of the State's intersection as a result of this development. 20 to 30 per hour, during the peak hour. Because we have Boulevard of Americas, which provides access out to the Central Avenue, and then obviously we have access to Cedar Bridge Avenue.
That has to be a left turn though, right, to utilize Avenue of the Americas? So cars that make a right, you said it's a right in and a right out. So the right out means going towards Pine, correct?
It's going towards Pine and the Boulevard of Americas, South Avenue as well.
Okay, so they could make a left there. The study that you did was in the last two weeks? I think that's what you said?
That's correct, and it's weekly last night.
Okay, so the DMG was not functioning at that point, nor were the schools. I think this happened last time as well during the summer. That the town was down, there are 6,000 people going to DMG. They're not all going down Pine, but a lot of that will be going down Pine in what you checked on. So the numbers are definitely higher than that. It would be much better to have traffic diverted from Pine, not added to Pine. If you come by at nine to 10:00 in the morning or in the middle of the afternoon when schools are letting out, Pine is backed up almost to the balcony of the states. I live there. I can tell you so.
I'm very well aware of the traffic on Pine Street. Any traffic that will be coming to this site that are originating from Pine Street is going to be generated by the residents that live along Pine Street or south of Pine Street that have used that access to this development. That traffic is already on the road.
Not true.
It may manage additional retail opportunity as well as potential employment opportunity that may hit somewhere else in the town.
It's bus, school buses, it's people driving to pick up and drop off their kids. It's not the residents in that area. And who weren't there during the weird time of the year, who were there the last two weeks, which is not representative of the reality. So I suggest that you come back and check again when there are school buses and there are people going to the Yeshiva.
The schools were in session yesterday. They turned our cams over. Forty school buses recorded just during the peak hour going through Cedar Bridge Avenue and Avenue of the State's intersection. It's totally evident that schools were in session with that many trucks, that many buses within the peak hour.
Are you going to recheck?
We're going to continue to monitor. I have been doing the traffic count out here for the last 10 years. I'm very familiar with it, and there will be additional traffic counts as required by the county.
Are you going to recheck now that the schools are going to be back in session or not?
It's after my schools were in session yesterday.
The Yeshiva is well going to go into session next week.
Again, I'll do the traffic count as required by the county.
I think you didn't really just not answering my question. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't letting it.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'm sorry, yeah. I'll just take a quick look. I thought I had two four-minute sessions. I'm sorry. Is it the normal practice for the traffic engineer in counties all around to be hired by the developer? I lived in New York. The town hired the traffic engineer and charged the developer. It seems to be a conflict of interest. The goal of the board is to see that there is less traffic and safety on the streets. That's clear. If that's your interest. The goal of the traffic engineer is to see that the developer gets what he needs. I would suggest thinking about that alternative.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else in the public who'd like to be heard, please come forward. Stay known, come forward.
We'll close it to the public.
I would entertain a motion on this application.
I'm sorry, subdivision or side?
I'm both. What? Okay. Block 104. Everything is on my attention. It is not designated by...
104 will be owned by the town for later.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Renner for the subdivision. Do we have a second? Mr. Flansmore, second. The offer is... Roll call, please. Justice, opposition.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Garfield.
You have a vote. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Now, I would ask for a motion on the subdivision we did on this application.
I would motion for the side line, working with Renner to work out the course of...
And the only thing I wanted to add, what they agreed is to make the sidewalks connecting the two properties with proper signs, the stop sign before the crosswalk, with proper signs. Do you agree? Whatever. He said it would be minimal, minimal progress.
At the entrance to Cedar Bridge, can you make this a curving feet and make the left turn? Because it doesn't show nothing.
Cedar Bridge is in the town's connection with that approval, but it's more of that.
And you'll do everything for the approval of our engineer?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything you put in the motion.
Okay. Do we have a second? I'll second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yeah.
Mr. Stagel.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Robles.
Yes.
Mr. Mike.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Good luck. We have one more, and it's 25 minutes past five.
We have one more, and we're on the side of this one.
Who's the attorney? Everybody came after this. I think everybody's here for that school. I don't feel bad. Mr. Warren, can you do it in five minutes? Okay, let it be quiet for a minute, please. You know, I'm sorry. Okay, Terry, would you like to go through all, the likes of Mission Wager?
We have submission waiver that indicated our second letter. Project site, which is a mission that's on plan for EIS. Pre-protection action, the EIS, the gathering of the mission, showing the green bill. The submission here, the engineer contains the property's own small addition and does not affect the existing hospital parking circulation. The addition proposes the rule of one classroom and destruction of four classrooms. And that being the previous, which is not a significant effect on traffic, we feel that that's reasonable. Waiver, if they're requesting, this is a submission due to the project site being under threshold, which we also support. Waiver, insult from EIS.
Why do you have a comment?
We have environmental participation on the only known environmental free on the property, which is... Which is actually a concern here. And survey on the plan, so we're accepting that waiver request. The pre-protection waiver from management plan, what we talk for hearing purposes only. They would have to provide the pre-horror that the board approved. Submission waiver also for an installation lay-in while building addition is proposed. We support the request of hearing purposes. However, we do note that for review of the plan, there was a previous approval that had landscape. It's not on-site yet. As soon as the outcome of the case, that they don't provide that landscape approval. Here, sure, you do that. And finally, submission waiver with respect to the design recommendations for proposed drainage, since the site is not a major development and we increase that within the furby area of Mendel. Therefore, we support. For hearing purposes, we would like a copy of the stormwater plan.
I would ask for a motion to go along with engineer's recommendation. Mr. Flansmore, move. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Renner, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, please go on.
Under zoning, part of comment two, we, on here, testimony at the court, identified the opposite engineer, the school mission. It consists of 33 classrooms, which require non-working spaces. That is not included if the office is... And the proposed mission has an office. Testimony shall be provided by the non-working spaces. 73 spaces currently exist, and no additional parking proposed. To be continued on, we address the area of renovation. We agree that the best of all, which is completely removed. The issue is the requirement that not allowing you to have renovation on. We're going to take a renovation out of the city. Finally, we no longer need to leave the sun. I believe that's it. For relief. For our design waiver, which that should be accurate upon, we noted the latter that we will also grant for the previous approval. And then finally, we run circulation plan, bus loading area and loadings that will be on the site plan for sheltering, sheltering suit, since the car will be done with this. We support the range of waiver for circulation. We provide, I'm sorry, the designated spot for the...
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Germer. Good evening.
Before you go on, I just want to, okay, I just want to make sure we go over the plan review items. We'll put...
I can quickly check those.
So you checked them out? Okay, all right.
The reports I had to Terry.
All right, thank you. Then please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Maryam Moynstein on behalf of the applicant, Yeshiva Orhatora. I've been before the board in the past on behalf of Yeshiva Orhatora. This is a boys' elementary school, which is probably one of the most popular and fastest-growing schools in Lakewood. We are here this evening for cycling.
You just said that last week, was that different?
This one.
How's the girls' school?
Everybody behind me who's here in support of this application, you can just raise your hands.
I just want to know why none of you was sitting next to Robert L. Dinsky when he was sitting over there. I just want to know why none of you is sitting next to Rabbi Landinsky when he was sitting over there.
That was, that was the women's side. We're here this evening for side plan approval to construct a small addition to an already-approved and existing school. The demand for this school is so great, Rabbi Landinsky can testify as to the number of applications that he gets, that he just needs to expand in order to make room for some more classrooms and for an additional base mattress, so that they can accommodate more students. The net additional classrooms as a result of this application is three more classrooms. They're actually adding four new classrooms, but they're losing one as a result of the addition. The application is conforming, with the only relief we are seeking being for parking. I would like to actually call, as my first witness, the dean of the Yashiva, Rabbi Landinsky.
Rabbi Landinsky, please raise your right hand. Do you affirm testimony before the school, or do you have something to say?
Rabbi Landinsky, if you could just tell the board members what type of school this is. So that would be, so that would be grades?
Grade P through eight.
And the number of students that are currently enrolled in the school?
Eight hundred and eighteen.
And the next, what would be the maximum capacity of students after the addition of school?
Nine hundred.
So the next addition.
Hold on, hold on one minute, please. Just, Rabbi, how do you spell Landinsky?
L-O-N-D-I-N-S.
L-O-N-D-I-N.
L-O-N, D as in David.
L-O-D.
L-O-N, D as in David, I-N-S-K-I.
I'm doing the resolution now, that's why I need to put this under, how many students? But I'm making revisions.
Eight hundred and eighteen.
Eight hundred and eighteen present students?
Yes.
And maximum capacity after the addition?
Nine hundred.
How many classes do you have now?
It's split up, because we have Minion, and we have Morning. So Minion is four, five. Then afterwards, nine o'clock is ten. Two PM dismissal is three. Four is six, and four forty-five is six.
And it's been working for a beautiful day.
So Rabbi Landinsky, the net additional number of students as a result of this addition is how many?
Eighty-two.
And the net additional number of classrooms is how many?
Three. That's because we're removing one. It's going to be actually four, but due to construction, we're going to be removing one classroom.
How many staff members do you have?
Sixty-three.
Do you have any idea how many staff members do I have to school roughly each day?
I'd say approximately forty. The reason is because we have rabbinian teachers either carpooling, the L, the bus stops right in front of our property, rabbinian take taxis, and they do carpooling together. Neighbor, if we have rabbinian come from Westgate, or from Lakewood Commons, these places, they usually go together.
And how many additional staff members do you anticipate there will be as a result of this addition?
At most, six. One rabbi and one teacher for each class.
And the rabbi and teacher are at the same time?
No, the one is in the morning, one's in the afternoon.
So it's three.
It's three, correct.
So it's really three, but we're just trying to give you the worst-case scenario, and saying that is roughly, now you probably have somewhere between forty and fifty cars, plus an additional six more.
Right, right.
And how many parking spaces are proposed to the site after the addition?
Seventy-three.
So that still leaves us with, with parking space, with plenty, plenty of parking spaces for the school.
Correct.
As far as the basketball nets, because portable basketball nets, you're going to be removing.
That's no problem. Yes, correct, yes.
I have no further questions, but I would like to ask you some questions.
I don't know if Mr. Auerbach is teasing me when he said this, but are you proposing a pool?
The pool, pool is part of the last application. It does not get into the school.
The boys definitely are proposing it. If I'm proposing, I'm not sure.
My point is, I don't want to see you have to come back on correspondence for school.
No, no, exactly.
We have to, we will.
All right, all right, thank you. Okay, I just, I, I.
To answer your question, this is the third time this school has run this school, they have changed use initially to put that for, for, for a new pool, for a new, for that included in the pool.
Is the pool in the plans, is it shown on?
Yes, it's shown in the plan.
Okay, thank you, never mind. I just want to make sure.
Any, any new variants are you creating because of the new three classrooms?
The only variance is the parking.
Okay, I want to put on the record, any variants.
The only variance is the parking, as per Terry's letter, Terry is indicating that there are three parking spaces that are required for classroom, for thirty-three classrooms after the addition, which would mean that required ninety-nine parking spaces.
That's with the new ordinance.
With the new ordinance, I can get that. With the new, I do want to clarify, but what we are requesting is the variance for seventy-three parking spaces, but ninety-nine are required as per requirements in the new ordinance.
And according to all ordinance, you have had a surplus of parking.
The one that's required, I should be the one that's required. It's not, any, any other questions for Rabbi Landinsky?
No, thank you so much. Just a quick question, with this landscaping that was supposed to be put in, what, what, what's that?
It will be put in.
And?
Why wasn't it put in?
No, no, no. What plans that the future, I see, is it still a big lot behind, is that, or that's all over, so. You're building basically the maximum that you could all go to say.
Technically speaking, we'd be able to go sideways with this, present moment.
Sideways in front. And add another floor. We have to come back to that. These professionals are adding up.
As you see the growth from the bare body came tonight.
We're spending overtime.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Glenn, you have anything to add?
Glenn, ask me.
Mr. Limes, please raise your right hand. Do you swear from testimony you'll give before this board be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your professional plan, the board recognizes him based on his numerous appearance. I have a question about the variances. You have the variance for how many parking spaces?
Based on the new ordinance, we require six, or requires ninety-six parking spaces, ninety-nine parking spaces, we have seventy-three.
That's how many of this?
There's a question, Terry, we identified ninety-nine based on the scores, and you have office rooms here as well, so that contributes to the orders required, so how much?
Well, the, the, the section here, it says three classrooms, has no requirement for, for offices in, in this, in this zone, so it's, it's all based on parking, not on offices or tutor rooms.
So you feel that you need to be requiring ninety-nine based on?
Correct.
Do you agree spaces per classroom? In the M1 zone.
In, in this zone, I, I would agree.
Okay, okay.
In the past zone, you had, or the past ordinance, you had it broken out.
Okay, so.
So I'll, I'll put the resolution, a variance is granted to allow the seventy-three provided parking spaces.
Glenn, let's just go, you agree with the whole report, right?
Yes.
Okay. Anything, Terry says you agree. The only thing I want to bring, put on the record about the parking, that you're requesting a variance.
Yes, we are requesting parking variance, and as Rabbi said, there's about fifty cars. I also went out to the site, middle of the day, twelve-thirty, and found an excess of parking spaces, you know, with the current use.
Your testimony that there's ample parking.
Ample parking at this.
So, so, your testimony is that the site is working well as it is as far as the parking, and that we're adding at most three classrooms, or eighty-two students, and there's enough overflow parking that exists, that there should be ample parking with seventy-three parking spaces, correct?
Let me just confirm something. Mr. Limes, you believe that this application advances the purposes of zoning, allows a school and a place in a town that badly needs additional classrooms?
Yes.
Do you believe that any detriments that might flow from being underparked are outweighed substantially by the fact of providing efficient parking?
Yes, correct.
And you believe, I'm sorry, and you believe that the management measures that Rabbi Landinsky described, such as requiring carpooling for the staff members, taxiing, et cetera, that that, those management measures, plus the history of the school, shows that the, there will be no detriments, there won't be a parking problem?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I think the most important part for me, and the reason for granting this parking variance, is that based on the old ordinance, for all the classrooms that are in place now, they had sufficient parking, and then when you add the new ordinance to the new classrooms, there's still sufficient parking, there's still, there's overflow parking.
That, that's correct. If there hadn't been a change.
I mean, you have one and a half per classroom, based on the old ordinance, was required.
Yes.
Which you have, how many classrooms that have?
Thirty-three.
You have thirty-three.
Right.
You add another three, you have, you're adding three, so you're adding another nine.
So that would put us at fifty, and we have seventy-three.
And this is where I, I.
Let, let me read what I have briefly in my, in my draft resolution, because you should hear this.
One second, Glenn. With the old, with the old ordinance, we have one point five per classroom, you have to provide for offices, right?
Right, but then you have to get the offices, but then we still have.
And you still have a surplus of more.
Yes, correct.
I want to put that in the record.
Correct, yes, but that's correct, you should put that in the record. The old ordinance worked a little differently, it was one point five parking spaces per classroom, and then the, but the offices and the tutor rooms counted also, and one parking space, we still have a surplus.
And so, and right now, the ordinance is straightforward, three per classroom, and then it counts for all the offices?
That's correct.
Okay. I want to put on the record.
This is just the reasons that I would put, supported by the record, if the board adopts this, I say, I talk about the rabbi's testimony, and Mr. Limes' testimony, I say, the board finds that the deficiency in parking while exacerbated by this application is mainly due to the pre-existing building and the change in the ordinance, in that there is an existing school, and the application is only for additional classrooms. The board accepts the testimony of the applicant's witnesses that the school functions well based upon management, and that any detriments that flow from the parking efficiency will be outweighed by the need for classroom space. The board finds that there's critical need in Lakewood for classrooms, and this application helps fill that need.
Is there any, I know the day that there's parking from the school on the street.
When I'm going to have to visit the site, there were three cars parked in the street in this area. I don't know they're specifically from the school, but on-site, there were over twenty empty parking spaces. So why the three cars were in the street, you know, when there's sufficient parking on site? That's just, somebody didn't want to park inside? They could have been at the site next to it, but there's.
You would like to live with change to increase the parking spots, because there was a problem in most sites. And right from now, Chestnut Street is nine, that's a nine hundred and ten, it's a small synagogue there, you know, blocks are gray, double blocks, and all, and if, when they got the permit, they met the permit criteria. And I'm looking at your site plan, at the left side of there, you have parking lot.
Yes.
It looks like we could, maybe eleven, eight, ten blocks, I don't know, I don't have that marking on my copy, I don't know.
No, wait, can we, there's.
No, up here, right.
No, we have, we now have, one of the requirements of the couple works is the dumpster, which, which we pointed out in the letter, doesn't have to stem properly, we have to get rid of that dumpster, and then, most of the work department now wants traction factors, thirty yard compactors, so. The factors is, we can't add anything to that, to that far end of the parking lot, that's a practice that we would just say.
I'm living in Lakewood twenty years, and, and one of the problems I see in many of the school where, is the block, and certain times, it seems to get more and more often, the parking is on the squares, on the sidewalks, all of it. And Mr. Garfield, a school to give seventy-three parking spaces, I think it's a lot more likely, you don't take, what is schools, or you have seventy-three? It's not the asking for variance above, and Rabbi testified that they don't need more than fifty. I'm not saying it's wrong, but this takes, many times, it has to make it to the end. Right. Okay, thank you. I'll walk to the public.
I have a question from Mr. Klein, where are the sidewalks? Well, we were, we were granted a waiver on the original application, we're requesting the same waiver for sidewalks. There are no sidewalks in the area, there's no. So I recall when we had our plan review, we recommended that they provide sidewalks, we told them what the board's view on that is, we urged them to put sidewalks in the plan, the board now has to make that determination, sidewalks.
My only thing is, it's up to industrial commission. I know, it's industrial.
Industrial commission generally doesn't want sidewalks.
So we'll put that in the resolution, if the industrial commission confirms that there's no requirement for sidewalks, the board will prefer that.
If that's what they want. I think the board, Mr. Franklin, what, what do you think?
I don't like the sidewalks.
I'm sorry. Mr. Garfield, you want sidewalks? Mr. Sable?
No, no, the cars, the cars don't pull up outside on Vassar Avenue, the kids don't walk into the school, that's, that's, that, that doesn't, it's, this type of, this type of facility doesn't work like that. You don't have, you don't have parents dropping off kids on Vassar Avenue, then kids running into the school, that, that doesn't happen. And I know that, you know, in, in the industrial park in general, it's really been the will of the businesses in the industrial park, not to have sidewalks in front of the schools, because then you're actually encouraging the children to walk on the sidewalks on the industrial street, so that's.
Should I take a vote on it, on the side?
That's your call.
I, I'm going to poll the vote, and accordingly we'll vote. Mr. Grumburger, what's your?
What have we been doing in general in the park?
The industrial commission usually.
Or no sidewalks in the industrial park.
Usually not. Mr. Grumburger, what's your opinion? No, sorry, Mr. Garfield? Yes. Mr. Franklin, yes? Mr. Sable, yes? Mr. Flansmore? Mr. Renner? The client is from the industrial commission, I'll go along with it. Okay. Angelo?
No, I, no, I, I just remember the mayor saying absolutely a hundred percent sidewalks, he, he never said, except for the industrial commission.
And then the, I think the mayor told me the same thing.
And I also, I mean, I, I work in, in the, in the park, and, I mean, I teach some kids, students, hitchhiking there, walking in the road, especially on that, on the airport road.
So you have an opinion that there should be sidewalks?
Yeah, I'll take that.
Okay, Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Yes, sidewalks.
We have had some cases where we had sidewalks in the industrial park. I can't tell you.
Because the majority of the board is requesting sidewalks, so put it in, unless the industrial commission overrides us and say they don't want it.
Is that what the consensus is from everyone?
I don't know, I'm asking you.
No, I, I heard that they want sidewalks.
I understand, and if the industrial commission says no, did they supersede us?
I don't think so.
We'll be willing to put in sidewalks, and if the industrial commission, because we have to comply to them anyway, for, if they say they don't want them.
Then we come back to them.
We'll come back under car stoppings.
Okay. We'll allow you on first hand.
And we can give you the, the letter saying. I'll put that in the resolution.
Okay.
I know, we're open to it, but we're free to.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody in the public who'd like to be heard? Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Before we sign over here, before doing sidewalks, we need to put in sidewalks, before, before the parking lot for the building.
There's a painting across there for the hand.
It's very painted, I guess.
Well, this doesn't show very well.
That's the hand here, not the sidewalk, please. Does it put in sidewalks again?
That's great, great.
I hope that the public, and I love Mr. Public, nobody's got force. I just think it's important for the board this year, which Justin just told me, that, that there are businesses in the industrial park that have requested from industrial commission that they do not want their side. So you know the motion, you know what happens.
You see it walk on the streets.
I don't know, I, my, my kids will, and one of your kids will, and one of yours will.
So if the industrial commission says no, we come back.
You want us to come back, or if the industrial commission says no, then can?
What I put in the condition, sidewalks are required as a condition if the industrial commission objects, and the applicant can come back on correspondence and ask for a waiver.
Okay. Okay, we'll do it that way. Okay, I would ask for a motion on that. Yeah.
This is a two-floor vision. The second floor is a, looks like a large empty purpose.
It's a base mattress.
But nothing's being rented out.
Nothing is being rented out. They don't have any extra room in this building.
What is the room used for?
It's a base mattress, it's a study hall. It's a study. The study hall actually was never required as parking spaces for the study hall, because it's, it's space that those same classrooms are using, it's the same kids use the study hall at times, and sometimes they leave the classrooms. It's not that there are extra people or extra stuff there.
Okay. Anybody in the public who'd like to be heard? And I close it. I'll be contracting, I want to forget. I will ask for a motion on this application. Approved application, with, with, Mr. Grumburger made the motion, and Mr. Garfield second, based on everything that was said tonight. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Garfield.
Yeah, yes.
What?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin. Mr. Stable. Mr. Flansmore.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Renner. Mr. Eisenberg. Mr. Robles. Mr. Robles. Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
All right, just hit send on the draft of a resolution. Can everyone take a look at it on their devices? If you cannot, I'll show, I'll bring up my screen, you can look at it, or I can read the whole thing. So, the applicant, since due to time sensitivity, asks that the resolution be prepared, I anticipate that. I want to know if you want to adopt the resolution.
I think I ready, uh...
You, you edit the...
I'll be ready. Very good job. Okay, I would ask for a motion to approve the resolution. Can we vote? Mr. Flansbrum, move.
Not now.
Uh, Flansbrum, do you second? Mr. Meyer, second. On the resolution.
Oh, you're right, go, you're right.
You don't want it?
No, 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 no.
No, I don't want it.
You're right, you're right, I'm tired.
Okay, all in favor for the resolution?
Mr. Public, you just stop making noise, we're still doing things up here for your application.
Okay, all in favor to approve the resolution? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, Ali, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, and John, thank you for that expedition's work on the resolution, I much appreciate it.
I, yeah, expect an invitation.
Put the pool.
It's my question, not mine.
Okay, Ali, we have in correspondence the next meeting.
Yeah.
So I think we'll have a second on that.
Okay.